Good morning, everyone. A quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. And ladies and gentlemen, I ask you if you could please rise as the Wilmington Minutemen present our nation's colors. And ladies and gentlemen, if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all. If you could remain standing, ladies and gentlemen, and join me in a moment of silence for those men and women who have given their lives serving this great nation in our armed forces, and for the hope that those pursuing the missions of this nation abroad will return home soon and safely, and for all of those that have passed away in the past year, especially those that have served the town of Wilmington in our nation, namely Hazel Bachman, George Boylan, Nord Denault, James Down Sr., Suzanne Gagden, Mary Harvey, Private First Class John F. Landry Jr., Anthony Langone, Earl Lesperance, Arthur Lynch, Nelson McLaren, Sterling Morris, Larry Knoll, Frank Rattle, and Joseph Fierer Sr. Thank you. And if you could remain standing as the Wilmington Minutemen, who by the way are celebrating their 40th anniversary in the town of Wilmington, exit the hall. I would appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you to the Wilmington Minutemen. Good morning. A late start, but a start nonetheless. Thank you all for participating in the 2008 annual town meeting. A few things before we get started with the warrant, I'd ask that all of you please turn off your cell phones, pagers, BlackBerrys, or any other electronic equipment that you have with you. Articles 1 through 14 will be -- that's okay. Articles 1 through 14 will be taken up in order as they're part of the town budget process. Articles 15 through 28 will be drawn randomly. If you wish to speak, I'd ask that you go to the various microphones around the room. I'll call on those that I see first at the microphones. All motions or amendments having to do with expenditures of money or with the amendment of any bylaw must be presented to me in writing. For your information, those are articles 1 through 14, 17 through 22, 25 through 28. So if you're presenting any of those articles or plan on amending any of those articles, I need to have those in writing. Reminder that there's no smoking on school property. Non-voters, who should have the white stickers on, should be seated in the last few rows on this side of the gymnasium. And most importantly, if you have a question, if you're not sure what we're voting on, any question at all, raise your hand and ask me. I want to make sure everybody's clear on what you're voting on and what we're doing. Okay? Everyone should have the Finance Committee green booklet, which will be the articles that we're voting on, as well as you should have a one-page, blue sheet handout on Article Number 10, which is the transfer article on this year's budget. So if you don't have this, this is available in the foyer area. I'd like to, before we get started, thank our tellers, who will be counting our votes today, and also like to thank WCTV for their participation once again. It's a great service to the community, and we appreciate you being here. Strings attached is serving refreshments in the foyer area. I was told that the pizza just arrived. Please don't all rush out there now. We're just ready to get started, but I was told to make that announcement. And most importantly, as always, we will deal with each other respectfully. "Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the manner prescribed in the bylaws of said town, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet and assemble at the Botwell School Precincts 1 and 2, Wywood School Precincts 3 and 4, and the Town Hall Auditorium Precincts 5 and 6, Saturday, the 26th day of April, AD 2008, at 7:45 o'clock in the forenoon. The polls to be open at 8:00 a.m. and should be closed at 8:00 p.m. for the election of town officers." So motion, Mr. Newhouse.
I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article Number 1, to bring in your votes on one ballot respectively for the following named offices to wit: two selectmen for the term of three years, two members of the school committee for the term of three years, one member of the Housing Authority for the term of five years, and one member of the Redevelopment Authority for the term of five years. You are also hereby further required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington who are qualified to vote on elections and town affairs therein, to assemble subsequently and meet in the town meeting at the high school gymnasium, Church Street, in said town of Wilmington on Saturday, the third day of May, AD 2008, at 10:30 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure at this time to introduce to you the individuals who you elected last Saturday to the offices that I just mentioned. To the Housing Authority, Mr. Robert Deppesquall. To the School Committee, Mr. Stephen Higgins. And Ms. Leslie Quick. And to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, Mr. Michael McCoy. And Mr. Raymond Lepore. Article Number 2, to hear reports on committees and act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move to take no action.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, approval, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. And Article Number 3, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the article not be adopted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen to enter into an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws, with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2009 for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Newhouse.
I move that the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen be hereby authorized to enter into an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws, with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2009 and for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. And Article Number 5, to see how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments, and determine how the same shall be raised whether by taxation, transfer from available funds or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto. It's customary at this time, ladies and gentlemen, for me to introduce the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. John Dougherty, to explain to you the process of the budget and to make the motion on the annual budget. Mr. Dougherty.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Over the past few months, the Finance Committee has met reviewing the budget, and we had a public hearing jointly with the Planning Board to review the warrant articles. Our recommendations have been given out in the green booklet, and we would appreciate your consideration for the recommendations that our committee has made. I'd also like to thank the town manager, the Assistant Town Manager, Superintendent of Schools, the Superintendent of Shawshank Tech, and their various department heads for the help that they've given us in going through the budget and the warrant articles. At this time, I'd like to read Article 5. I move that the several respective sums, as recommended and presented by the Finance Committee, be raised from the fiscal '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town, while by transfer from available funds, as may be recommended by the Finance Committee, and be appropriated for the purposes set forth in Article Number 5. Each department's budget to be taken up and voted on in order as they appear, subject to amendment, and each department's budget not to be opened for reconsideration until the entire budget has been voted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The recommendation is obvious, the approval, discussion. Mr. Segal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to add to the header on Article 5, that the town should divest -- the town of Wilmington should divest from doing any business with any company that employs illegal aliens. And this would be for all contract employees or employers.
Is that in the form of an amendment?
In the form of an amendment.
Okay. Need that one in writing from you?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Segal's amendment is to add to Mr. Dougherty's motion, so include his motion in its entirety, and add to divest the town of Wilmington from doing business with any company that employs illegal aliens.
Correct.
Okay. And it's been seconded. Just want to make sure I have your intention to preclude the town from doing business with any companies that employ illegal aliens from this point forward. Correct. Okay. So can I change that rather than divest? Can I say, can I change that to preclude? That's fine. Okay. Thank you. And is that okay with your second, sir? Just want to make sure I have it. Okay? Motion, the amendment is made and seconded. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Segal.
The essence of this is simply that I don't want my tax dollars going to people who are not employing according to the laws of the nation and the laws of the state. It's really pretty simple and can be administered simply by adding a disclaimer in any contract that the town enters, simply saying that your -- the employer or the contractor or whatever would attest to the fact that they do not employ agents, or the contract would be void. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mrs. Linnahan.
Yes, sir. I would like to ask, will local authority enforce that? Where will the enforcement come from?
Yes, Mr. Hayden.
I agree with the spirit of this amendment. What I'm concerned about is the --
Are you answering Mrs. Linnahan's question? She has a question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. I need to get her question answered first. Mr. Kira.
I'll repeat it, sir, but I believe Mr. Kira is going to answer.
If this is adopted, I presume that it would be a regulation under our various contracts that we now are guided by various state and federal statutes, and as the awarding authority, as a contracting authority. In the case of most municipal purchases, it would be the town manager's responsibility. And for school purchases, it would be the superintendent of schools' responsibility.
Would local authority enforce that, sir? I know in many communities that that's the way they've handled it. Local authorities, meaning the police department or however they're going to do this.
I don't think the police department would do it. I suppose that one could check through the audit reports. But I mean, this is coming as a total surprise to me, and --
It's a surprise to me, too, but that's okay.
And, you know, these are the kinds of things that deserve to be vetted so that we can have these kinds of answers when something like this comes up. I'm surprised, I guess, the town moderator consulted with Town Council. I'm surprised this is within the scope of this procedural motion, frankly.
Mr. Chairman, if it's voted on, may I ask Council what his recommendation would be on -- who would be the enforcement of this article? Local?
Mr. Durentis, I believe the question is for you regarding the enforcement of the amendment.
Thank you.
As I understood the amendment, it was basically a condition on the appropriations that they would -- the contracts to be awarded would be vetted by the town manager or the school committee to eliminate anyone who is employing illegal aliens. So it would be the town manager --
And local authority.
And local authority to put into the contract award process a limitation on the appropriations.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Mr. Frazer? Oh, Mr. Hayden, I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Hayden.
As I started to say, I agree with the spirit in which this is offered, but I'm really concerned about how this might be implemented. Think about the fact that we do business with Verizon. Are we going to say because Verizon might have some illegals working for them that we will no longer do business with Verizon? And we could go down through every company that we do business with, and we might run into some of these same things. So to go back to the point that was made by the town manager, I think it ought to be given some thought, and maybe the article presented a different way, in one that would be enforceable and implementable. But I have real concern with just throwing something into the monkey wrench here without understanding what the consequences can be. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Frazer.
David Frazer from Wabash Road. Mr. Moderator, I appreciate the gentleman's amendment. However, this is a policy decision we're making here in five minutes. I think we need more data, process, and fairness into amendments like this, particularly dealing with money and how we operate. And I think this motion needs to be -- this amendment needs to be defeated at this time until it's able to go to the respective committees that can really go through a process that is fair to the business and the individuals we're trying to exclude.
Further discussion? Ms. Segal, you only get to speak once on an amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Joanne Shukas, 7th Cedar Street. I think if Verizon and these other large companies haven't learned their lesson by now, they should. And it's our tax dollar, and what we're voting on is if we want to give our tax dollar to illegal aliens. Is the town council going to review every contract that goes out of here that we pay out? I think that's what the question is. Who is going to review the contracts? To put the wording in there that we are not going to honor any contracts with a company who deals with illegal aliens. I mean, let's get to the meat of it. Are you going to take care of that, Mr. D. Laurentis? Are you going to go through every single contract? You are our town council, and this is a legal issue that we're dealing with here. It shouldn't be on somebody in the school committee who does not have this type of legalese to take care of it. It should go through legal channels. So let's do it right if we're going to do it.
Was that in the form of a question, Mrs. Shukas?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Durentis, the question is, who would review the contracts and draft them to make sure they're in compliance with this amendment?
If this amendment passes, we will provide language, contract language, to the town manager and to anyone else entering into contracts on behalf of the town government that they can insert in contracts that would carry out the intent of this vote.
Further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Segal, could you give her the microphone, please?
Josephine King, Burlington Avenue. I think it's a good thing because illegal aliens take away monies and employment from people that -- because they're willing to work for a lower wage, and they take away employment by people that probably need the job to support their families here or in that area. I think it's a good idea.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Waddell.
I had two questions. Once again, I'm going to agree with the spirit of this, Mr. Hayden. I just wish I had a little more time to digest, but two questions that would come immediately to mind would be, maybe this for Town Council, who would be the investigatory agents to see if the companies have the illegal aliens? And at what expense might there be, would the town incur in that?
One of the questions I asked when the town moderator came over to talk with me about this amendment was about the use of the word divest. And thanks to the moderator, we are not looking at trying to break contracts that have already been entered into. We are only looking forward. This, the entire article, the reason why this is within the scope of the article is that it deals with fiscal '09 expenditures. So that going forward, if we have language in the contract, that language has got to be signed by each of the parties who are entering into contracts with the town. That's the first enforcement step. The second enforcement step is the contracts are administered through established procedure. That procedure is through the town manager's office. That's where any reports, any monitoring would take place.
The town, what additional expenses there might be?
As long as we're not trying to cancel contracts and get out of contracts that have already been entered into, I don't see that it would incur any particular expense. This would be in the contracts that the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts enter into, they have all of these provisions already in them about illegal aliens, about discrimination, and so on, and it's just pages and pages of boilerplate. Including some boilerplate in the town's contracts are not an expensive item.
Mr. Newhouse.
A question for Town Council. Paul, I would assume that we could include as a town, through the both sides of town government, provisions in all those contracts without an amendment to the budget. Is that assumption correct?
Correct.
With that, I wonder if we just -- I would suggest we vote against the amendment. Certainly, the town administration has understood the point that's been made today, and we can look at all of our contracts that are executed here on out.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? Okay. What you're voting on is Mr. Segal's amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Elswood.
We're just looking to get some clarity here. Would this mean that we would not be able to do business with a company like Verizon if they employed illegal aliens anywhere in their company or specifically on our contract?
Mr. Durentis, did you -- the question was, would the town be able to do business with -- would it preclude us from doing business with Verizon if they employed illegal aliens somewhere other than in the contract area that we're specified? Is that correct? Yes.
Typically, the way these clauses work is that they require the vendor to certify that they are not employing aliens. I am sure that Verizon would certify that they're not employing illegal aliens because they're already required by law not to employ illegal aliens. So these will be certifications that will be kept on file in the town manager's office from different companies doing business with the town.
We're ready for the -- only once on an amendment. Mr. Segal. Yes, sir.
Rose Peters, 2 Englewood Drive. Would we have somebody reread this amendment? I have no idea where the heck we are now. We've got things going here, we have questions coming up, and I personally don't know what we're going to vote on now.
I'm going to clarify that for you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Okay, we're ready for the vote. What we're voting on is Mr. Segal's amendment. Mr. Dougherty made the original motion to take up the town budget by department, which we will be doing in a moment. Mr. Segal amended that motion to include Mr. Dougherty's language, plus adding to preclude the town of Wilmington from doing business with any company that employs illegal aliens. If you want to adopt Mr. Segal's amendment, you should vote yes on this vote. If you don't want to, and you want to go back to Mr. Dougherty's original motion, you should vote no on this amendment. Okay? If the vote is favorable on the amendment, we will then take another vote on the main motion as amended by Mr. Segal. Everyone clear? Anyone not clear? We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment as presented by Mr. Segal signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. All those in favor of Mr. Segal's amendment signify by rising at your place. Keep standing. All those opposed to Mr. Segal's amendment -- All those opposed to Mr. Segal's amendment signify by rising at your place. Please remain standing. On all standing votes, ladies and gentlemen, I'll let you know when they're done counting. Voters follow 66 in the affirmative, 143 in the negative. The amendment fails. We're on the main motion as presented by Mr. Dougherty. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Burnham, and I live on Woburn Street. Actually, I prefer to face this way if I can. I'm speaking today on the overall budget for next year, fiscal 2009, and I did a little bit of calculations, and I found out that the proposed budget increases by about 5.14% over last year's budget. And I, for one, think this is too high, given the current state of our economy and the current state of the town's growth in terms of new construction. And I think that we are spending beyond our means, and I would hope that we could get a more conservative budget to increase our free cash position and reduce our expenditures going forward. Now typically, we've been to these meetings before, the budget usually carries quite handily with very little discussion, except on particular line items. I'm speaking today to talk about the entire budget. The people on the platform behind me all have a strong interest in seeing this budget passed. They either are directly employed by the town, on our Board of Selectmen, some of the people are employed directly by the town, or they know people or are closely connected to people that work for the town or have been appointed by members who work for the town. There's not too many people here who are going to speak in favor of the taxpayer, and that's why I'm here today, to say that I think the budget goes too far. We need, I, for one, will be voting against the approval of the budget, even though I know it's quite likely that it will pass. And I ask everyone in this audience to think twice about this growth in the budget and to stand with me today to vote against the budget, to send it back to the Finance Committee and the town manager, to cut the budget with, instead of a 5% growth, more conservative 2% or 3% growth, in keeping with probably the increase in many of what we see as our income on a day-to-day basis. Thank you very much.
Okay, further discussion on Article Number Five, to take the items up by department as they're in your booklet. Further discussion, Mr. Segal. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I have the question to the town manager, I would presume. If this article does not pass at this meeting, the procedure would be to make a new budget and then come back to another special town meeting to get it approved in time, or what would be the procedure? I'm asking. Mr. Kira?
When you say this article, the article is a procedural article telling us how we go one by one through the department. So I'm not sure how that, what you're asking. When you say, if this article does not pass, the entire budget? Well, if we react whatever way you, the town meeting asks us to react. I mean, if you cut the budget, then we have to live with that unless we come back at a subsequent town meeting.
So just to clarify on the process, what you're voting on now is to take up each department's budget individually. Mr. Segal, are you asking that if you vote no right now, what happens? Or you're going to have an opportunity to discuss every single department after we vote on this Article Five? So there's potential discussion, and there will be votes by department? So there's no one vote on the entire budget, if that was your question? Okay, it's by department, and that is what Article Five is asking you to do, is to take them up by department. Okay? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Anybody not clear? Those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. I draw your attention to page three in your booklet, ladies and gentlemen. The column that reads Finance Committee Recommends. Okay, that is the column we're voting. So the first vote we will take will be Selectmen Legislative, $24,460. Everybody with me in the booklet? Any questions in the booklet? Okay. Selectmen Legislative, $24,460. Discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Some of us are wondering how conflict of interest is actually defined. And from my understanding, the voters are the selectmen's boss, the selectmen are the manager's boss, and the manager is the boss of the people under him. But some of the members of our Board of Selectmen are employed by the town. And it seems to me that there is some conflict of interest here. I see Mr. Lepore's equipment working at the recycling center. I see his trucks pumping tanks out at the schools and his plows out in the streets. And Mr. Kamaglia, I realize that attention to veterans is very important. However, if he is supposed to be the manager's overseer, yet the manager is over him, how can we expect there to not be conflict of interest? My question is this. Can somebody tell us how much Mr. Lepore has been paid by the town for his services? And, Mr. Kamaglia, how much has your pay increased? Because from what I understand, you were a part-time employee, and then you became a selectman, then you became a full-time employee. The other question with regard to this particular issue is, why does the town have to pay out of their taxes for a person who's representing employees that are employees of the federal government? Why isn't the federal government funding this position? And, Mr. Fiori, nice guy, however...
Mr. McDonald, is your question, what is the definition of a conflict of interest? And I think there is a process that you go through in that regard. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Durentis on the definition of conflict of interest, and if you can explain to Mr. McDonald what the process is to go through if he feels there is one because it is not town meeting.
The General Laws, Chapter 268A, define conflict of interest. That chapter has numerous subsections and a lot of technical language. Many of what is defined as a conflict is not intuitively obvious. It is what the legislature has determined is to be a conflict. There is a state agency who's charged with interpreting these complicated rules and providing advice and enforcement. That's the State Ethics Commission. Their function, again, is where questions arise, they interpret this law and give advice. And where violations occur, they are charged with enforcing. That agency is not connected to the town of Wilmington. It is not a Wilmington organization. It is a state agency.
So I think the point is, Mr. McDonald, that the issue in the process is not here. So I'm going to ask that we continue with discussion pertinent to the line item of Selectmen Legislative. Yes, sir. What's your point of order?
James Devine, 1990 Road. Mr. McDonald had several other questions, I think, that also need to be answered.
Right, and I think if they pertain to something other than conflict of interest, he has the microphone.
Yes, but they pertain directly with our town budget, which we're on the article for right now.
We're on the article for Selectmen Legislative, is what we're on, sir.
Yeah, they're looking for a pay raise. And I was wondering how much, is this, I was wondering how much the town has paid to Mr. Lepore, because it appears as though the selectmen are looking for, you know, over $6,000 a year increase in their salary.
Mr. Newhouse?
My point of order, Mr. Moderator, is that this line item in the budget, while questions may be legitimate questions that deserve answers and thorough answers, this line item on the budget is asking the town to appropriate the necessary funds for salaries, expenses, and furnishings and equipment that the Board of Selectmen uses throughout the next budget year. The salaries that we're talking about are not salaries for the Board of Selectmen, that's an unpaid position. The expenses that we're talking about probably includes a $200, I think a $250 stipend that we get per year. The furnishings and equipment and the $6,000 increase that's been asked about is specifically for some desks and some chairs. So while this line item has something to do with the Board of Selectmen, it's got nothing to do with salaries earned by members of the Board of Selectmen. It's administrative staff and some furnishings and equipment. And some of those other questions, I think, are appropriate in another forum, but not when we're talking about this line item.
Further discussion? Ms. Linehan.
I'd like to move the question.
I don't see anybody else at the microphone. Motion has been made to move, I'm sorry, ma'am, she's made a motion. So Mrs. Linehan is asked to end debate on this line item, Selectmen Legislative, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. This requires a two-thirds, we'll try a voice vote. Does everybody clear what we're voting on? She wants to end the debate and take a vote on this right now. Okay? It would give the maker of the motion, who was Mr. Dougherty, on Article Five, up to 10 minutes, if he so chooses. Okay, everybody clear on what we're voting? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Selectmen Legislative, $24,460. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Voted.
Selectmen Elections, $36,984. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Registrar Voters, $8,025. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Finance Committee, $9,355. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Manager, $482,112. Discussion. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, can somebody explain the expense account for this particular item? I look at a lot of other departments, and I could total up numerous departments, and they come nowhere close to the expense that we're paying to the manager.
Mr. Kira, on expenses, $72,228, is I believe what he's looking for, some detail
Yes, these don't relate to expenses, for example, that, you know, go to me directly. This concerns the expenditures that the town hall incurs, as it does its day-to-day business. For example, it includes all of the postage, printing, and advertising, and any of those kinds of work, and it includes all office supplies for, you know, copy machines, et cetera, et cetera. Most of it is in the postage account, which is about $53,000 or $54,000 if that is for postage. But it's the general day-to-day expenses that are a part of operating town hall. Many of those expenses are done, many of those purchases are done centrally. You'll see smaller expense items in the various departments as they're specifically germane to them. But in the normal course of action, it's for office supplies, it is for postage, it's for advertising, it's for printing costs, those kinds of things that relate to an operation of the side of the town.
Is this particular amount itemized, that the people of the town could get an itemized copy of it?
I suspect it. You could get a further breakdown. We do this at all of the Finance Committee meetings when we explain to them how it breaks down. But they are allocated through certain contract, certain line items, contract line items, such as the ones that I just mentioned. But the town accountant's office could certainly break it down further for you if you'd like.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kira. And just one other problem that I have. Our fiscal year ends at the end of June. However, the annual report comes out like about a week before the meeting, and it really doesn't give people a chance to really study it and look it over and evaluate if there's wasteful spending or be able to have questions answered. So maybe we can start getting the same report out early so people could have the benefit to be able to study it better. Thank you.
Town Manager, further discussion? $482,112. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Accountant, $317,937. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Treasurer Collector, $293,491. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Clerk, $172,703. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Board of Assessors, $350,127. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on page four. Town Council, $220,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Current Building Committee, $450. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public Safety Police, $4,65,220. Discussion. Mr. McDonald.
The sick leave buyback, is that a provision in the contract that we have to automatically stick to? Or can we void this line item on this particular budget item?
Mr. Kira?
It's a contractual arrangement which has been in the, you know, precedes me, actually. So it's been in the collective bargaining agreement for quite some time, where police officers get paid up to five days for not using more than five days of sick time, and they must accrue at least 100 days. So several police officers are eligible for that in accordance with the contract.
The other concern I have is that it appears as though the chief is getting over a $6,000 a year pay raise. And I'm just wondering how many people in town have gotten a $6,000 pay raise this year, especially our elderly people on a fixed income. The gentleman that spoke at the initial part of this article, he stated that our economy is very bad, but yet we're giving out pay raises to people who are making quite a lot of money, and they continue to get pay raises to this extent almost every single year. And I'd like to see the pay be frozen and no pay raises. So I'd like to make a motion that this particular article have no pay raises in it.
Are you recommending the police chief's line item, Mr. McDonald? Not clear what your amendment is.
You know what, Mr. Stewart? Why don't we, why don't I make the motion that the entire department get no pay raises? Okay? This is an overstaffed department. I look at it as a publicly funded payroll feeding.
So I'm just trying to figure out procedurally what it is you're trying to do and what the numbers are, Mr. McDonald, if you have an amendment, I need to see it.
Let me, can I rephrase the motion, sir?
Please.
I move that there be no pay raises for anyone in this department.
Okay, let me try this one. Your motion is to do away with all pay raises in this department. Many of those pay raises are contractually agreed to and obligated already, certain ones are not. If the intent, the motion as you have in, Mr. McDonald, I have to rule out of order because the department's salaries, many of the officers are contractually obligated. So we cannot, this meeting cannot arbitrarily cut those, it would be an unfair practice in collective bargaining. If your intention is to reduce the line item, then you would need to amend with a specific number that you want to reduce the number to, put that on the floor, and if the body determined that they wanted to go with your number, the town manager would then be responsible for figuring out how to appropriate those funds with the contractual obligations he has. Does everybody understand my explanation?
Mr. Moderator, I will rephrase my motion, but I just have a quick comment. This is why we need to have contracts yearly, not multiple years, okay? Because the town meeting, okay, is the authorizing body. Every year they come before us, and when there's a problem like this, okay, it indicates that there's a problem with the system, there's a problem with the contracts. And I hope that somebody would support an article that's going to come up that says, and it already has come up in the past, that we enter into contracts every year. It got wiped out, all right? But this is the problem, all right? Somebody comes up when there's a bad economy, trying to do something for you people to lower your taxes, okay? And then we have a problem like this. So, Mr. Stewart, let me rephrase my question, my motion, okay? I move that the town eliminate any pay raises for people who we are not contractually bound to.
I need for you to give me a number, Mr. McDonald, that you want to reduce the police department budget to. I'm not, we are not able to, at this meeting, come up with a specific number of who's contractually obligated, who's not. If you have a number you want to reduce the police department budget to, that's the amendment you need to make.
Why don't I just ask a question to our town accountant? Can our town accountant give us a number that I can reduce this by so that we don't give pay raises to people who we are not contractually obligated to?
The answer was no.
We're paying you big bucks, why can't you do it? We just gave you a pay raise.
Mr. Morris.
I don't know what contract negotiations are taking place. I am not involved in contract negotiations. Those are the first two reasons. Two, we'd have to go back and see what employees have steps and various other things which may or may not have been contractually obligated. You're asking too many variables.
Well, the town accountant, you should be prepared for the meeting. We could recess it and let you go back to your office and get these numbers.
Mr. McDonald, do you have a specific number and an amendment?
I'm asking our paid employees for some information, and they can't produce it.
I think that Mr. Morris has explained the situation. Do you have an amendment?
No, he's kind of ruled this way out of it.
No, thank you. Further discussion?
I would like to state that I take exception to Mr. McDonald's comment about being overstaffed. Every week if you pick up your paper, you'll see that the house breaks are increasing, vandalism is increasing, traffic, we talk about all the time. We certainly have a corridor going on now, right on 38, and it's going to build up more. I'm not sure because I would like to ask the Chief of Police, I don't think he would recommend that, I don't, he doesn't need to stand up. But I don't think that we are overstaffed at this point. The other thing that I would like to, just as a point, sir, to bring up, is that this is the same issue that Mr. Kira talked about earlier. We do have budget hearings. There are opportunities to discuss this before it comes to the floor. And I would like to ask that we move the question.
I have to rule that one out of order, Mrs. Linehan. You can't speak and then move the question, sorry. Mrs. Sullivan?
Suzanne Sullivan, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a specific question. I think it was last year at town meeting, we approved two new lieutenant positions. And I'm just looking at the budget, and I see that it looks like maybe we staffed one of those positions. So my question to the town manager is, do you, Mr. Moderator, did we fill both those lieutenant positions? And if we did not, what happens to the money that was appropriated for that lieutenant's position that we didn't fill? Because it looks like we jumped from $191,000 to about $285,000.
Mr. Kira.
Yes, specifically, we did authorize appointing two new lieutenants. However, we didn't fully fund them. And we didn't fully fund both lieutenants. We funded them for a portion of the way into the budget year. They're now being, so we're not asking for any new positions, we're now asking to fully fund them in this year's budget. And that's why there's the difference. I see what you're saying. It looks like one half, but they were only funded for half a year. And that's the explanation. So there's no new positions, but they're now fully funded for the year going forward.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Bob Biswani Rashwood. I was looking at the overtime budget in here for patrolmen. And if my numbers are doing correct here, it would probably be cheaper, wouldn't it, to add in three more full-time patrolmen and actually cut the overtime budget by adding an extra person per shift?
Mr. Kira or Chief?
I'd be happy to take a crack at that, and I think Chief Begonis can talk about the scheduling. But it really wouldn't be. There's a lot of overtime that is necessary, particularly through the investigative bureau, the detective bureau, there's overtime that's required with regard to when people are out injured or out sick. When you factor it all in, and when you factor in all of the costs that would be associated with additional police officers, you would not be able to reduce the overtime by the same amount of money that it would cost for the new police officers factoring in insurance costs, other expenses related, other salary-related items that are listed within that budget. But certainly, Chief Begonis can speak to the staff and issues that sort of, you, Mr. Moderator.
What I'm looking at here, I mean, at $400,000, if we're averaging $55,000 per officer, and that's just across the board, we could still put on three full-timers, including overtime, including salary, at $200,000 and still leave $200,000 in the overtime budget. It would just, to me, make more patrolmen and more officers available for duty and less overtime cost.
Chief Begonis?
Moderator, specifically on point, adding three officers is actually probably going to increase some of that line item. When you put officers on the street, they do things such as make arrests as we ask them to. When they make an arrest, now they have to go to court and pay overtime for that. I also have to train them. They don't typically get all their training while they're working, so they have to be set aside for weeks to go off to different training programs. And a lot of times, because of that vacancy that's left on the ship without paying overtime, to either pay them to go or to backfill. So, you know, I think at this point, the numbers that we have, we've looked at them, and they've worked for us. At this point, the overtime numbers, we do try to keep as low as possible. We do make adjustments within the department on a daily and a weekly basis to combat that increase. That would be my answer.
Yes, sir, again. You all done, sir?
Yes, Jim Burnham again from Woodman Street. And this is a question for the Finance Committee, having to do with this budget item and some of the other ones as well. As Mrs. Linehan pointed out, we do have review of this budget by the Finance Committee. But as I review the Green Book here, I see that the town manager's recommendation and the recommendation of the Finance Committee varies by not one penny. So my question is directed to the Finance Committee. I would like to know, did you in fact look at this budget closely? And why is it that not one single item did your recommendation vary from the budget submitted by the town manager? Specifically on the police budget, but other budgets and items as well.
We're on police, so I'm going to let them answer the question to police.
Answer it just for the police. Why there was no variation between what the town manager recommends and what you recommend?
Mr. Dougherty?
We took a look at each of the individual budgets and the documentation that went along with it. We took a look at the contractual obligations that are coming up in the coming year, the increases in each of those, and came up with the conclusion that the town manager's budget is a solid budget for this year.
Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, very interesting. Serving on the Finance Committee is not an elected office. I know I would never run for elected office, I'm not interested in the political side of this thing. I am interested in the proper operation of this town. And one of the things I found on the years I've been on the Finance Committee is that when the budget is brought to us, this is a bare-bones budget. This is not a budget that we have to cut and slash seriously. To be honest with you, we would not be able to get into the departments deep enough to be able to reconcile every dollar that's being spent in these departments. So we listen to the department heads. We have public meetings, which are sparsely attended. I mean, I'm talking about one or two or three people come. And each of these departments are required to come and present their budget. And we ask a lot of questions at these budget sessions. They probably, each department of the major department probably is two to three hours at least, and we've had a chance to look at it beforehand. So to be honest with you, you ask me, can I cross every T and dot every I in this budget? I can't do that. But if we look at the numbers from year to year, the growth in employees, those are the kind of things that we deal with. So we'd like to ask you to come the next year when we do the budget sessions, and you can ask all the questions you want in very good detail. The Chief of Police and the Fire Department and so forth have budget books of their own, which we go through and see where the expenditures are. But I have to tell you, this is not just a carte blanche, but I do give credit to this town, to the town manager, for bringing a budget before us that isn't a joke. It's a good, tough budget, and then we look at it after that. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Yes. I heard the chief state that we have to pay overtime to police officers going to court and other investigative items. However, when the police go to court, people pay fines, people pay court costs. And my question is, what happens to all that money? Does it go into the general fund?
Chief?
Once again, Mr. Moderator, there is a small portion of those fines and fees that does come back to the town hall, it is extremely limited. Most of those court costs and fines go to things such as the state's injury fund, and court costs go to court costs.
Does the chief have an amount that was paid to the town last year in receivables from these court fees?
Chief?
I don't have that tally right now. We do get a monthly tally from the Treasurer's Office on monies received for those funds. That all goes back into the general fund and is not used specifically at the police department. So any fees that do come back are used by the entire town hall?
I think the guy keeps shutting my mic off. That's the problem that I have. The money comes back into the general fund, and then the people continue to be charged in taxes rather than get their tax bills reduced. We're looking at overtime here of close to $400,000, I believe. That's a lot of money. This guy actually made a good point about hiring more officers if we needed them. What we need is, we need officers that actually do the job right now. We have a duty officer who the chief last year called a first responder, yet he's neither an EMT nor a paramedic. He can't respond, he's not qualified. And this is why I have a problem, given people pay raises when they're not reducing crime. I see pictures in the paper after somebody's robbed the bank, and they get there a half hour later waving their gun. The guy's long gone. And you want to reward guys for this? You want to reward guys for being out on Route 93 while your houses are being broken into? You want to give people overtime pay? We've got 36 patrolmen, folks. There should be no need for any overtime. And I'd like people to start voting against some of these items because you're being gouged every single day. What's the point in even having a town meeting if you're just going to give these guys a free pass every year? This is a police item. For example, there was a murder in our town. They can't even investigate stuff like that, they have to call in the state. And then we're being told that they incur costs? Why are you people buying this garbage? Start voting against some of this nonsense.
Chief, any response to any of that? Mr. Kira? Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
We are? Just in answer to the specific question about the fines and forfeits account, the town brought in about $154,000 in police fines and forfeits. As the chief indicated, the court costs, there's very little of that that comes back to us in terms of court costs. These are police fines from tickets issued, et cetera. That is a part of the local receipt category of the budget. And I don't know that anybody wants a primer on revenues right now. But about 68% of the levy, of the money that comes from the taxpayers, local property tax levy, about 68% is what makes up the town budget's revenue portion. The $155,000 is a part of local receipts, which is about 8%. And it does by law, we're all governed by the municipal finance statutes, all goes into the general fund, and then it gets distributed from that point via this appropriation process.
Chief, anything? Chief?
Just one other question?
Excuse me, you've used your five minutes on this line item, Mr. McDonald. Ma'am? I don't see anybody up at the microphone, so you're good if I try to vote, ready for the vote? Those in favor of the police department, $4,065,220, signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Fire, $3,157,028, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. no. Voting. Public Safety Central Dispatch, $543,887. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, Mr. Stewart. Just want to focus people's attention on how much this is costing us every single year. $543,887 is what they're asking us to pay for. We continue to have guys sleeping on duty. We continue to have guys watching TV instead of answering the phones. We have a situation in our town where we could have had a lot of money to purchase a piece of property that's come up for sale, that the town has the right of first refusal to. Now it's a big question, what's going to happen with that property? And that's the Sharapa property. That property should be in the town's possession. However, when we spend over a half a million dollars a year on people that we do not need, these people, this particular line item, did not come into existence until the Town Manager became into existence after the Public Safety Building was built. Prior to that, the Police Department dispatched their own calls, the Fire Department dispatched their own calls. And now we hire 12 people at a cost of over a half a million dollars a year so that people... This isn't rhetoric. This is fact, folks. People can sleep on duty and not have to answer a phone. People can watch TV and not have to answer a phone. People can be hired for a department and not have to be a paramedic. And then we subcontract it out to private people, all right? You see a guy's house that just burnt down in town, the guy's been paying taxes for years, and then he gets sent a bill for $2,400 because he needed an ambulance? And then the response you get back from the department head is that, oh, it should have been sent to the insurance company. Well, let me tell you something, folks. We have a problem in our country, and it's an insurance cost crisis, and it's people like this who are driving the rates through the roof. And it's people like you that are allowing them to do that. And I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate this entire dispatch center. Mr. Stewart, I move that we completely eliminate this budget item.
So you're asking to make the line item zero. I see that. I need that in writing. Is there a second? No second. We're on the main motion. Further discussion? We're at $543,887.
I was here, Mr. Stewart.
Oh, Ms. Shukas, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there.
I disagree with you, Mr. McDonald. I have had to call those EMTs. I have had to have the police in an emergency, and their response is right there. They pick up the phone on the first ring. They're not sleeping. They're not paid to sleep. When you start attacking the people in this town on our public safety, and that's what they are. They are there for our public safety, and I think they're worth every penny. You evidently have not needed their services. They are... The policemen that came to the house, they did what they had to do until the EMTs came. The police came, they send a fire truck. They send whatever you need. And I'm damn glad they do.
Chief Begonis?
Personal Privilege?
Sit down, Mr. McDonald. Don't start again this year. Okay? This is going to be a short meeting, okay? Chief Begonis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to take an opportunity to, as entertaining as this can be, to assure the citizens of the Town of Wilmington that there are not police officers and dispatchers sleeping on duty, watching TV, and not answering the phone. You can rest assured, when you call the Wilmington Public Safety Building, someone will be there to answer your call, and someone will be there to respond to whatever you ask us to do. It has been that way since I was a police officer, became a police officer, and it will continue that way as long as I'm chief and as long as I'm concerned with the citizens of the Town of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. Public Safety Central Dispatch, $543,887. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Animal Control, $37,685. We're on page five now, ladies and gentlemen. Animal Control, $37,685. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. We are now on Public Works, ladies and gentlemen, which is contained on page five and page six of your booklet. So we are voting the line item on page six, the total Public Works appropriation of $5,805,587. Mr. Darty?
I move that the sum of $5,805,587 be appropriated for the Department of Public Works, and to meet this appropriation, $20,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots accounts, and the sum of $40,000 be transferred from the Cemetery Trust Fund's interest account, and that both amounts be applied to the line item, personal services cemetery, full-time, and that the balance of $5,745,587 be raised from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made. Second, the Finance Committee recommendation is obviously approval. It's $5,805,587, of which $60,000 comes from available funds. Discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Just a question before I make some comments. When a particular item is appropriated, but yet it's not used, what happens to that money?
Mr. Kyra?
It depends. It can either be transferred by this body. For example, later we'll be asking to transfer funds to cover some of the deficit line items such as fuel, heat, gas, electricity. Or generally, it earns to free cash and becomes a part of the town's surplus.
The reason for the question is, a couple of years ago, we were asked to appropriate some money to do a feasibility study to clean up lead that was deposited by the police at the Abigail Island site. And as I read through the annual report, I believe it was $115,000 that was appropriated, but it wasn't used. However, correct me if I'm wrong, but I found out that the people who actually did the lead cleanup, I think it was a bobcat scooping some lead out, and now I hear reports that there are some monitoring devices there, and lead is in fact actually being detected. So what's disturbing to me is, we're asked to appropriate $115,000 to have professionals tell us the correct way to do it, but yet our guys, who really aren't specialists in this area, clean it up, okay? And then now we're having lead detected. And I'm particularly concerned because I had a couple of friends in town who have had children who died of lead poisoning. And this area is right beside our wellfields, folks. So I'd like to have somebody clarify what's going on down at this department and what's going on with asking the people for money. It almost seems like a bait-and-switch type of thing where you bait the people, saying, let's give us $115,000, and then we're going to bring it to our general fund so that it doesn't look like we're really going to be taxing you because we already have that money because we taxed it before. It's kind of confusing. Can somebody, maybe our Finance Committee Chairman, can answer that?
Mr. Kyra?
Thank you. In fact, the expenditures were in fiscal year 2006, the site cleanup for Abigail Island. The town did appropriate the funds. I don't remember the exact year the town appropriated the funds, but the bulk of the project was accomplished in fiscal year 2006, where we spent over $98,000. I also see that there were expenditures in fiscal year 2007 of over $6,500. So that money was used for the intended purpose and for the appropriation.
Further discussion?
It just appeared that in the book, it showed that there was no expenditure for that particular item.
May I ask, Mr. Moderator, in which book?
Annual Report.
Well, there was a...
I'll get the page for you.
There was an expenditure in that item. I'm sure it's in the accountant pages for fiscal year 2006. So...
I'll get you some more info on that.
While you're getting it, Mr. McDonald, I still need your motion on the Central Dispatch amendment. Thank you. Mrs. Linehan, you good?
Good. I just wanted to move the question.
Okay. We're on Public Works, $5,805,587, of which $60,000 comes from available funds. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Community Development, Board of Health, $302,138. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. And it's customary, ladies and gentlemen, and I recognize the department heads of the Town of Wilmington that are retiring either now or before the next annual town meeting, and I would like to recognize and congratulate Mr. Greg Erickson on his upcoming retirement from the Town of Wilmington as Director of the Board of Health. Mr. Erickson, congratulations. Sealer of Waits and Measures, $5,366. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Planning and Conservation, $296,323. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Mr. McDonald?
We have a planning person handling conservation and planning, okay? We have people who discipline themselves in an area of study and get professional in areas of study so that they can offer a positive, immediate, effective impact, okay? What we were told last year is that our planning director qualified for the job by being an English teacher. And I'd like to make a motion that we have zero funding for this line item. The Planning Board doesn't need somebody to hold their hand if they've been competently screened and qualified to serve on the Planning Board. So the motion is, I move that there be zero funding for this item.
Is there a second? Motion's made. No second. We're on the main motion. Mr. McDonald, I'll need both of those in writing, please. Planning and Conservation, $296,323. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Building Inspector Board of Appeals, $202,199. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry. Folks, I'm sorry. I'm going fast. If you jump up, put your hand up. I apologize. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Sullivan?
I just have a quick question. I notice in a lot of these, the full-time positions, it's like this one's 2.5, some of the other ones 4.5. And I'm just wondering, is that a part-time position, the 0.5?
Mr. Kyra? I think in this department, it's under other salaries, correct?
It's full-time. It's 0.5. It's when you put a position into more than one depart... when an individual serves more than one department.
Ready for the vote? $202,199. Building Inspector Board of Appeals, those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Also, our building inspector will be retiring in the upcoming year, Mr. Paray, and I'd like to congratulate him on his upcoming retirement and wish him well. If I happen to mention someone that isn't retiring that I say is, please jump in and tell me that, okay? Public Buildings, $4,160,860. Discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Yes. It was brought to my attention that in the past that we've hired a skilled electrician, and now we find him sitting behind a desk. We have a guy that's the superintendent of our building, and we're just questioning... I'm just questioning competence. I watched meetings where they're looking for multiple millions of dollars to build a new school because a company had to be hired to do a study. This is a problem that I have, folks, with people who are hired and they can't offer professionalism. We have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for people to do feasibility studies. Why don't we start hiring people who are qualified to do the job? Mr. Lasar, can you speak to us as to what Mr. Hooper's function is if he was hired as a skilled electrician and what he's doing now?
Mr. Lasar?
The Assistant Superintendent is in charge of the whole of the department under me. When I retire, he will still be doing the same function until a new superintendent is hired by the Town Manager.
Was he originally hired as a skilled electrician?
Yes, he was.
And now he's sitting behind a desk?
He was promoted to Assistant Superintendent eight years ago.
Thank you.
Public Buildings, $4,160,860. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Mr. Lasar tipped you off to my upcoming announcement that he will be retiring this upcoming year as well, and we wish Mr. Lasar well in his soon-to-be-retirement. We're on page seven. Human Services, Veterans Aid and Benefits, $230,910. Discussion. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, just getting back to my original question about the veterans agent being a function serving federal employees. Can somebody tell us why we're being asked to pay to fund this rather than the federal government?
Mr. Semaglia?
Mr. McDonald, it's Mr. Semaglia, okay? The Department of Veteran Services is mandated by Massachusetts General Laws to have a full-time veteran agent in every community if you have over 12,000 residents. It's not just federal work I do. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 115, also is for aid and attendance of veterans that are in your community, paid through the community, and reimbursed 75% from the state. When I... And just to touch on what you said before about I was part-time, if you don't have a full-time agent, you can form a district, is what Wilmington and Reading had for many years. When I came on, the workload became such that we have to have a full-timer here, and now they have a part-timer right now in Reading. And it's not just federal benefits that I apply for.
How much does the town receive in federal aid or state aid rather than local aid, local taxation?
The money that is spent, sort of Chapter 115, on the veterans' benefits, the state pays, reimburses the town 75%. And we have over $2 million coming back in the town from the VA, from veterans that are either on benefits or compensation or retirement from the military, which I also assist them get that money as well.
So can I interpret what you're just saying as the amount of money that's being appropriated for fiscal year 2009 is 25% of what is needed, and the other 75% is over and above this?
It's reimbursed. It's reimbursed, Mr. McDonald, from the state to the town. They're about a year behind. But the 75% for the veterans' aid is reimbursed from the state under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 115.
So 75% of this will be reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. Why are you asking for 100% rather than 25%?
Because that's the way it's set up, Mr. McDonald. The state is reimbursing us about a year behind.
Thank you.
We're good. Veterans, Veterans Aid and Benefits, $230,910. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Library, $935,792. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Recreation, $112,720. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Elderly Services, $209,437. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. Historical Commission, $27,354. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Voting. That concludes the total town budget. Now we're voting on schools. Wilmington School Department, $29,259,500. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Ken Lipton, Seven Birch Road. I have just a couple of questions. Mr. Kyra or Superintendent Benton, could you tell me how much money, if any, is remaining in the middle school building fund that I've seen referred to as being used for dispensing for expenses in the past?
If there's any money left, it's very little because we did have about a million dollars, you may recall, because the project came in under budget, and we were able to transfer about a million dollars, oh, I want to say five or six years ago, this body authorized that to go to the high school. school where they built the new computer rooms. The town accountant, with the permission of the moderator, could probably tell you if there's any additional funds left in that account.
We have about $120,000 left in there. We have committed some of that, some building repairs there, so I would say it's about $50,000 approximately.
Thank you. My interest in that is that I'm very interested in the planning for a new high school, and if there had been significant dollars there, I would-- was interested in seeing whether that could be applied towards that potential future expense. I have two other quick questions. Under central office expenses, there's an almost 30% increase in expenses. I was wondering if you might be able to provide some insight into that as well as the reduction in expenses under the elementary side? Why there was reduction in expenses directly in the schools and a 30% increase in expenses in the central office budget?
You're looking at page eight.
Page eight.
Under teachers' elementary expenses?
Yeah.
And then under two administrative central office expenses?
That's correct.
Those two, okay. Ms. Benton or Ms. Kane?
Peggy Kane, 40 Hanover Street, Chairman of the School Committee. I'd just like to ask you to recognize Mrs. Benton.
Of course.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the reason that there is an increase in the central office expenses is that this year, in order to try and see some savings, we have brought all the language arts and mathematics curriculum accounts under the central office account. If we buy in bulk, we get to save more funds, so that's why you see a reduction at the elementary level. In addition, there was an increase in some of our contracts for services.
Thank you.
All set.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Amanda Muncie, Burlington Avenue. I just had a quick question on page nine, athletics. I was just wondering about the one salary there that's increased by 37.6%. Just some clarification on that.
Sure. Ms. Benton.
Mr. Moderator, the salary account includes the salary of the Director of Athletics, his secretary, and all of the coaches and the referees.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes, just a couple of questions and a couple of comments on. Can somebody tell us how much it costs to educate each student per year?
Mrs. Benton.
The total budget divided by 3,884 students.
Okay, and is there any provisions where if people want to send their kids to private school, they get any type of voucher or any type of credit for that?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
No, there is not.
Okay. Some of the concerns that I have, it was reported to me, in fact, by a teacher that was getting students that really didn't even know math from the middle school. He, in fact, had a couple of students come to him and state, you know, "I flunked every subject last year, and they passed me with a B." And I was wondering, is this pretty much a common practice, or is there anything to allow students a proper education if there's difficulties, to put them in a program where they may need special attention? You know, we hear different reports of no child left behind, and it seems like it's not working in our town for the most part.
Mrs. Benton.
Town moderator, in all due respect, our MCAS scores have increased every year for the past four years as far as individual students who need extra support. At the end of each school year, principals review with their staff and the individual parents if they feel that a student should be retained versus moving forward. And I don't have the statistics on me, I can present them to you if you come by the office on Monday. There are students that are retained. As far as students graduating from high school, they are allowed to stay more than four years to graduate. I don't have all the statistics with me, but I would say that we take each student and look at their case individually. There are not extra funds, per se, for certain students. There are funds if a student is on an educational plan. And at the middle school, because we did not need adequate yearly progress, there were funds that were given through the state to provide for professional development for the teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, we're ready for the vote. We're on Wilmington. School Department, $29,259,500,000, those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, $3,260,000,000, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Pages eight and nine are there for your information, ladies and gentlemen, that's what we just voted on. And we're on page 10. Atturing debt and interest, $4,051,982,000, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Unclassified and reserve, $9,421,628,000, discussion. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $9,421,628,000 be appropriated for unclassified and reserve, of which the sum of $75,135,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve insurance account, and that the sum of $261,782, be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve employee life and health insurance account, and that the sum of $15,662,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve Medicare employees contribution account, and that the remaining balance of $9,69,49,000 be raised from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is obviously approval, discussion. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I just want to bring up a line item here, it's ambulance billing, $25,000,000, folks, okay? And I just want to address an earlier comment. If people had paid attention to what I was saying, I never said the police are sleeping on duty. The firemen are sleeping on duty, okay? They're the ones that should be answering the phones, okay? And now we look at an ambulance bill of $25,000,000, and no one down there can make a bill out? We have secretaries, clerks down there, can't make an ambulance bill out? You've got to pay $25,000,000. But I do have a question. Under insurance, when a police officer works a detail and is being paid time and a half, does the town have to pay extra insurance to cover him for that?
Mr. Kyra?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we strike the $25,000 from this budget item and mandate that the fire department do some work and actually send a bill out. And Mrs. Stewart, I have a comment after that.
Well, I can't accept your motion as-- if you're looking to just bake the line item zero, I can accept that amendment. The further discussion is up to the chief to determine how his department will run, not yours.
Okay, I move that we strike the $25,000 for ambulance billing.
Is there a second? Hearing none. We're on the main motion, $9,421,628,000, of which $352,579 comes from available funds. Sir.
Ken Lipton, Seven Birch Road. Just to ask for clarification on two line items. Could you just give me a little more detail on what the salary adjustments and additional costs are, as well as the computer maintenance and expenses, and the reason for the significant increase in the line items?
Mr. Kyra, it was salary adjustments and computer maintenance.
Yes, I can speak to the first, and maybe Mr. Morris can speak to the computer. These are-- this is funds that we use for related personnel activities, whether it be for advertising positions, whether it be for arbitration cases. And then there's also additional dollars in there to-- because we're going into some collective bargaining issues.
Why aren't those not in the actual department areas as opposed to--
Probably so as not to tip our end when we're bargaining collectively with the employee
You could?
The second question.
And the second question on the-- on the computers, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, it's increased by about $100,000 for two reasons. First of all, we're spending about $20,000 in order to improve some of the networking systems we have in the town. Most of that's going to go to hardware and to some expertise to install some of those items. It's also for an additional $80,000. Our current financial software company has requested an upgrade of approximately about $150,000 to $180,000. We are not satisfied with what they are offering for that upgrade. We are looking at other vendors. We estimate it's going to cost approximately $80,000 for a new vendor if we decide to go to a new one, or we're going to negotiate with them and reduce the amount.
Thank you for the additional mention.
No comments. For discussion, we're ready for the vote. Unclassified and reserve, $9,421,628,000, of which $352,579 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Statutory charges, $6,715,036,000. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $6,715,036,000 be appropriated for statutory charges, of which the sum of $311,004,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the statutory charges retirement contributions account, and that the remaining balance of $6,404,32,000 be raised from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, can somebody tell us the item for retirement contributions? If that is for past employees that are retired, or is that going into a fund for people that
Mr. Mendez.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The answer is actually both. The Middlesex Regional Retirement System administers the pension plan for the town's employees, so there is a liability for past service, and there is also an accruing liability for current employees, so I guess the answer is both.
Okay, thank you.
And I did not get a second on that, I apologize. Could I get a second just for the record? Thank you very much. We're on statutory charges, $6,715,036,000, of which $311,004,000 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. That concludes Article Number Five. We're now on Article Number Six. On page 12, ladies and gentlemen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of a new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, and further to authorize a sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced. Such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, the board is select them as follows. Police department, purchase of five replacement police cruisers. Fire department, purchase of one pickup truck. School department, purchase of two replacement standard minivans. Department of Public Works, purchase of two replacement one-ton trucks from the Highway and Tree divisions, one six-wheel dump truck from the-- for the Cemetery Division, and one sewer and storm drain pipe cleaning Vector truck for the Highway and Sewer Divisions, or take any other action related thereto. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll take these in four separate motions. First motion on the police department, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jimmy, you're doing a good job. Normally, over the past few years, just real quick, I've always read into this, and I've always said good morning. Unfortunately, this year I got to change it. I'm going to say good afternoon. I move that 140-- I move that $144,700,000 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of five replacement police cruisers. For the police department, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other disposition in any of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized. Thank you.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is $144,700,000, discussion. Mr. McDonald.
In our town, there are really no roads that would be conducive to travel 130 miles an hour. There's really not a need to purchase eight-cylinder vehicles and further guzzle gas and guzzle tax dollars. And what I'd like to see is-- I'd like to see vehicles purchased with no more than a six-cylinder engine, and I'd also like to see them painted a solid color so that when they are resold, we can actually save some money on charges that we would have to incur for painting. And I think it would be more desirable for somebody purchasing a vehicle after it's come out of service for the police if it had a six-cylinder engine. So I move that the cruisers that are to be purchased be no more than a six-cylinder vehicle in a solid painted color.
Is there a second? Hearing none, thank you. Could I get that one and your other amendment on the $25,000 reduction on ambulance billing? Please, in writing, thank you. Further discussion. Police department, purchase of five replacement cruisers. Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Fire department, Mr. Lepore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $40,000 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purposes of one pickup truck for the fire department.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is $40,000. Correct, Ms. Lepore? Forty, thank you. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. School department, Mr. Fiore.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that $40,000 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year 2009 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of two replacement minivans for the school department, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other dispositions, if any, of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Mr. Fiore, the amount again, I'm sorry, I--
$40,000.
$40,000, thank you, okay. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, $40,000,000, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Department of Public Works, Mr. Smart.
I move that $474,000 be raised and appropriated from fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of two replacement one-ton dump trucks, one replacement six-wheel dump truck, and one replacement sewer and stormwater pipe cleaning Vector truck for the Department of Public Works, and further the sale, trade-in, or other disposition, if any, of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Total amount being $474,000.
$474,000.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, can somebody tell us how much the Vector truck specifically would cost? It seems to me that with the amount of vacuum that we do, we could subcontract this for a lot less than we're paying for this, and I'd like to move that we strike this item from our budget.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. McDonald, I need all three of those before I have any more motions from you. Okay? And ladies and gentlemen, it's not a vacuum, it's a Vector. Okay, just for your information.
Can our highway department explain what the truck does?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is actually a placement to current vehicles.
This is actually a replacement to current vehicles. Can you hear me now? This is actually a replacement of two outdated vehicles, and this will be used, uh, all the time for the sanitary sewer maintenance and also the stormwater system maintenance.
Does it perform, uh, an operation at vacuums, lines?
It would have dual functions, yes. It would be a, uh, a vacuum to, to vacuum out the various sewer systems, and also a high-velocity flush system to flush out systems.
Just wanted to let you know, Mrs. Stewart, it is a vacuum truck.
It's a, right, Mr. McDonald, it's stated as a Vector truck, was I was correcting the, uh, exact language of the motion, Mr. McDonald. Thank you though for pointing that out. Further discussion. Four hundred and seventy-four thousand, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of a replacement police communication system for the Police Department or take any other, uh, action related thereto. Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that one hundred, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year oh-nine tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of a replacement communication system for the Police Department.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, discussion. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, we have a brand-new building down there. Why do we need a brand-new communication system?
Chief?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The system we have now is, is, uh, been in work for probably, uh, thirty years with upgrades to equipment. When we moved into the new building, um, what came with the new building was a, uh, new antenna tower, but that basically does not service the outlying ends of the, uh, community on Ballard Vale Street, um, outgaging areas of Andover Street, as well as Industrial Way. The difficulty of it is, is, um, when the officers are out there actually handling calls inside buildings, they're not able to communicate on their portables back to the base, which is an officer safety issue as well as a law enforcement issue. The, um, other aspect of this is, we now operate under an analog system, and as mandated by the federal government, we need to move towards a digital, similar to what they're doing with the, uh, television sets over the next year or so. And as we move forward, um, this is one of the, uh, final steps we'll need to take to upgrade our system to a digital system and enhance the communications as well as officer safety.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the vote, we're on Article number seven, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. I'd like to, at this time, recognize, uh, one of our members of our legislative delegation, uh, our fine senator, state senator from the town of Gloucester, Senator Bruce Tarr. Thank you for joining us, Senator. We're on Article number eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the installation of a suspended ceiling and the installation of replacement lighting in the first floor at the Wilmington Memorial Library or take any other action related thereto. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that fifty-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY oh-nine tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the installation of a suspended ceiling and the installation of replacement lighting in the first floor at the Wilmington Memorial Library.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is fifty-five thousand dollars, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for engineering, bid preparation, and other professional services for the design of the Main Street Sewer Interceptor Construction Project, which will enable the town to repair approximately thirty-one hundred linear feet of pipeline or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Fiore.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that one hundred and twenty-two thousand be raised and appropriated by, from the fiscal year tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for engineering, surveying, bid preparation, and other professional services for the design of the Main Street Sewer Interceptor Construction Project in order to repair approximately three thousand one hundred linear feet of pipeline.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, Finance Committee recommendation is approval. The amount is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, um, can somebody tell us how many engineers are employed by our town at the Town Hall, the Highway Department, the Water Department, and any other department?
Mr. Kira.
Uh, the Superintendent of Public Works happens to be a, um, PE, but he's not employed as a town engineer. Uh, but we do have, uh, one, the Director of Engineering Services, and, uh, three others, one of them just, uh, filled a vacancy.
So you're saying there's only two engineers in town? Because I look at the what?
No, four, four, one plus three, four.
Uh, the problem I have with this article is, we have all these engineers on our staff, and, um, for a simple sewer line, they can't design it. We have to pay a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to subcontract it out? Maybe what we should do is subcontract all our engineering out? Because if we're hiring engineers that can't do a simple sewer line, what can they do? This is pretty much in line with many other things I've been saying today. You're hiring people to perform a duty that they can't do. The ambulance has to call another real ambulance. All right? Some people are not aware of this, what's going on. Mrs. Zoukis, um, she got up and started saying that I don't know what I'm talking about. But I do know, and I've had, had to call an ambulance.
Mr. McDonald, we're on an engineering line.
Now we gotta call a real engineer.
Mr. McDonald, thank you. We're on Article number nine, further discussion, Ms. Sullivan.
I was wondering, I, I support the, um, the, um, Sewer Interceptor Construction Project to, to fix the problems that are there, but I had a specific question for the town, um, manager, Mr. Moderator, um, regarding the Lowell Street Sewer Project that didn't happen. Uh, what happened to that appropriation, and why isn't that appropriation going to this project if that project never happened?
Mr. Kira.
That, that was an authorization to borrow, and we never borrow the money.
Further discussion, we're ready for the vote, Article number nine, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is the amount. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Voted. We're on Article number ten, which, uh, is the blue, single-sheet handout that you should have received in, when you came in, in the foyer area. Does everybody have, have the handout? Great. We're on Article number ten, this, "To see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year two thousand and eight operating budget from other line items of said budget and from other available funds or take any other action related thereto." Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that five hundred and eighty thousand dollars be transferred in the following fiscal year two thousand and eight accounts. Police Salary Lieutenants, forty thousand. Public Safety Central Dispatch Personnel Services, fifteen thousand. Public Works Personnel Services Engineer Full-Time, twenty-five thousand. Public Works Contractual Services Rubbish Collection and Disposal, one hundred thousand. Public Buildings Other Salaries, twenty thousand. Unclassified and Reserve Insurance, thirty thousand. Unclassified and Reserve Employee Health and Life Insurance, three hundred thousand. Unclassified Reserve Professional and Technical Services, fifty thousand dollars, a total of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, to the following fiscal year two thousand and eight accounts. Fire Salary Overtime, eighty-five thousand. Public Works Contractual Services Snow and Ice Miscellaneous Services, sixty thousand. Public Works Materials and Supplies Gas, Oil, and Tires Other, forty thousand. Public Works Materials and Supplies Gas, Oil, Tires DPW, twenty thousand. Public Works Materials and Supplies Snow and Ice Sand and Salt, fifty-five thousand. Public Buildings Heating Fuel, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Public Buildings Electricity, thirty thousand dollars, also for a total of five hundred and eighty thousand.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. You have the sheet, so I'm not going to reread you the items. Is there a discussion? Ready for the vote? Those in favor of Article ten is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town senior citizens' tax work-off program or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Lepore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars be raised and appropriated for the fiscal year oh-nine tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of providing senior citizens' work opportunities for services rendered in the town in accordance with the town senior citizen tax work-off program.
Thank you, the amount is fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, Finance Committee recommendation is approval, discussion? Those in favor, oop, yes, sir. Mr. Bodnar, I believe.
Mike Bodnar, I'd like to know, uh, someone up there, um, on this work-off, uh, program, senior citizens, how many seniors does this program take from seniors in town? Is it ten, twenty, forty?
Mr. Kira.
It varies based upon the appropriation, but we're anticipating that, uh, at least twenty-four seniors, uh, would be able to, uh, take advantage of this program in fiscal year oh-nine.
But if magically a hundred would apply?
No, i- i- in fact, that, that's not correct. Um, we, um, have had years where, uh, not as many, um, that we've had funds not used, you know, shot amount of dollars, uh, but...
I understand that, but if, if it was better advertised and more seniors wanted to be available to, to this work-off program, if you automatically had, or magically had a hundred seniors appearing next week...
They would have, with all due respect, here's how it's advertised. It goes to every single home in the town via Town Topics. It's, um, discussed and, uh, provided over at the Elderly Services Department and as well as the Town Hall.
Excuse me, sir, he's, he's speaking, if you could let him finish, I would appreciate it, thank you.
It is put in the newspaper, and it is also, uh, been put on the, uh, on the Rotary Board. So I think it is well-advertised, and, uh, we receive, uh, folks who are interested each year, and we've been able to try to provide funding for those based upon the, the interest that we've had each year. Uh, there have been cases when, uh, one or two people might not have, uh, been selected, but generally, everybody, um, who's, who avails themselves to work, who's qualified to do the, to do the work, who qualifies under the policy, that the, you know, is a, is allowed, is allowed to work.
I, I think it's a very, very good program, I'm not, I'm not denying it. What I, what, the only thing, and I don't believe you still addressed it, if you had, were inundated with a hundred seniors, could you put them to work?
No.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're on Article number eleven, the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Smaglia.
Moderator. I move that six thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from fiscal year oh-nine tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Six thousand dollars is the amount, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee recommendation is approval, discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. I just noted, noticed that another member of our legislative delegation has joined us, and I'd like to welcome and thank, uh, Representative Jim Misselli for joining us today, thank you. We're on Article number thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars each, a total of fifteen hundred dollars, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section nine of Chapter forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neelsworth Post two-four-five-eight of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc. in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the, for the Wilmington Post one-thirty-six of the American Legion, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that one thousand, one thousand, five hundred dollars be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year oh-nine tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section nine of Chapter forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neelsworth Post two-four-five-eight of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc. in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post one-three-six of the American Legion.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is fifteen hundred dollars, Finance Committee recommendation, approval, discussion. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I'm wondering if somebody can answer the question, maybe our town council. Um, if the town is partaking in funding, uh, these places, and there's, let's say, uh, a drunken brawl and inju, injuries, uh, does the town's insurance cover that? And can you tell us a little bit about liability, uh, responsibility for the town?
Mr. Durentis? Question is on the, uh, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse and the American Legion Clubhouse. If I'm hearing the question right, Mr. Bodnar, does the town have any, uh, liability to incidents that happen at those halls? The answer was no.
Thank you.
Here, we're on Article number thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars, further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, one-half for the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as follows. First, a compost bin revolving fund with the established spending limit of forty-five hundred dollars, with the source of revenue being the sale of compost bins. The spending authority being the town manager, and the purpose for the money may, may be spent in the purchase of compost bins. Second, a subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund with an established spending limit of two hundred thousand dollars, with the source of revenue being betterment receipts and other loan repayments from property owners participating in said program. The purpose of expenditures being the repair and upgrade of subsurface sewage disposal systems and the repayment to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust of any funds advanced to the town for this purpose, and the spending authority being the Board of Health with approval of the town manager.
Thank you. The amounts of forty-five, the, the spending limits of forty-five hundred dollars for the compost bin revolving fund, and two hundred dollars for the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, Finance Committee recommendation, approval, discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. That concludes, uh, or this will start the random selection process.
Excuse me, Mrs. Stewart?
Yes, what purpose, do you rise, Mr. McDonald?
I just have a question on our budget before we continue.
We've, we've completed the budget, Mr. McDonald, that, that the budget is over.
Can't bring it up for reconsideration?
You can make a motion to reconsider a specific line item, yes.
I just have a question first, if you don't mind.
No, I, no, I, I can't allow a question, we've completed the budget process, that article is done for the day unless we reconsider, Mr. McDonald.
I make a motion to reconsider it.
Reconsider what?
The entire budget.
Since we voted on Article five to take up the budget by specific line item, that motion's out of order, Mr. McDonald. Okay, this begins our random selection process, ladies and gentlemen, so we're now on Article number nineteen. Okay. Article number nineteen, which is on page sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and page twenty. Don't worry, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. "To see if the town will vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-three D, Sections one through sixteen expedited permitting, or to take any other action related thereto. Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-three D, Section one states that notwithstanding any general or special law charter provision by law ordinance to the contrary, this chapter shall apply upon its acceptance by a city or town. Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-three D, Section two states that the following words shall, unless the context clearly requires otherwise, have the following meanings." I'm not going to read all of that to you, but I will draw your attention, ladies and gentlemen, to page twenty, the last paragraph, and to see if the town will designate... the town will designate the following parcel of land as a priority development site in the town of Wilmington for expedited municipal permitting within the meaning of General Law, Chapter forty-three D, and approve the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for designation of such parcel as a priority development site or take any other action in relation thereto. Land on the west side of Interstate ninety-three identified assessor's map, R dash two parcel sixteen comprising a total of twenty-three acres. The map on this article, ladies and gentlemen, could be found on page thirty-five if you're looking for the parcel. Is there a motion, Mr. Sorrentino?
I mo- I move that the provisions of Chapter forty-three D, Sections one through sixteen of the general laws be accepted and to designate the following parcel of land as a priority development site in the town of Wilmington for expedited municipal permitting within the meaning of General Law, Chapter forty-three D, and to approve the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for designation of such parcel as a priority development site. Land on the west side of Interstate Route ninety-three identified as assessor's map, R dash two parcel sixteen comprising of a total of twenty-three acres.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. The description of the parcel is the same as is in the booklet?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second?
Right.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation, approval, and planning board recommendation?
Approval.
Is obviously approval. Discussion, Mr. Sorrentino.
Moderator, I'm going to give the floor to the planning director.
Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, uh, an act that was passed by the legislator, legislature several years ago to authorize communities to designate as priority development sites, certain sites within the community. Um, the one that has been chosen for this designation is on the west side of Route I ninety-three. The town has been engaged with the communities of Tuxbury and Andover in a planning, um, exercise, which is resulting in the petition for an interchange, a new interchange between Dascom Road and Route one twenty-five. The designation of the site on the west side of the highway as a priority development site limits its use until there is an interchange. So, the development, because there is no access from the west side, there will be no development there until the interchange is approved. What this does is give the town the opportunity to apply for planning funds up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for planning how this site could eventually be used.
I'll set for a discussion. Ms. Sullivan?
Um, at the public hearing, I had requested, um, well, I asked the, the Board of Selectmen that were present there at that time and, um, if they understood what their role was in this article. Um, Mr. Newhouse stood up and said that he wasn't a hundred percent sure, but he was going to look into it and make sure that he understood. Um, at that time, Mr. Fiore didn't seem like he understood his role, and the only, the only other selectman that was there that did not speak was, was Mr. Smaglia. And through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Smaglia if he understands what his role is in this article.
Point of privilege, Mr. Moderator? What's your point of privilege, Mr. Newhouse?
Uh, I was quoted, and I'd like to clarify that before anybody else is...
Your position?
Absolutely. Uh, I'm not going to stand here and tell you I can remember exactly what statement I made at that meeting, uh, but I can tell you that my position is this. Uh, we have town council to review the applicable laws. Uh, the Board of Selectmen has voted, uh, every year to take advice of council, take advice of the town administrative people. Um, when and if the Board of Selectmen is involved in this process and this article is passed, which I very much believe it ought to be passed, you can be rest assured that the Board of Selectmen will know exactly what its role is, exactly what its jurisdiction is, and, um, you know, I'm not going to stand here and, and spend, uh, all this time reviewing a statute to banter back and forth about whether or not I or any other member understands the nuances of this statute. Uh, perfectly capable of doing that. It's what I do for a living. But I'll rely on town council for that, and we'll make policy decisions in accordance with the law if this thing is passed. Thank you.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rod. Um, I think, Suzanne, you asked me twice if I understood it, and I thought I said yes, as opposed to what you just said, that I did not. And I also further went on to say that there are complex laws. I deal with complex laws, and every little bit is it, but for the gist of the most of it, I more than understood it, and not to further this debate. But thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Smaglia?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, I too am not, um, a hundred percent sure of all the complex laws that'll be going on, as I'm not an expert on everything, but just as every issue that I've ever voted on, I've done my homework, I've taken, um, recommendations of council and every other thing, and I'm sure I will do that if, if this article is passed too. Ms. Sullivan?
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miss Sullivan.
Um, well, I, I, I'm a little concerned because I still haven't gotten a clear answer from any of the selectmen that have spoken so far, is whether or not they understand what their role is. And you have a specific role in this article as, as the governing body. The governing body is mentioned thirty-five times in this article of what you need to do. Like, for instance, um, the, the governing body, after approval by town meeting in a town, shall file a formal pos- proposal with the board. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that you guys have to do, and it seems like you're just going to rely on everybody else to do it, and then give a rubber stamp of, of approval. And I guess I take issue to that. Furthermore, I see this article, and if I were a developer in town, I don't think I'd like this article because it gives preferential treatment to somebody else. You know, for what reason? For what purpose? To help them develop their property? I see this as almost a form of corporate welfare. What this town has to do, the hoops that this town's going to have to do, our town employees, including the Board of Selectmen, to promote the development of one parcel of land, I think is wrong. I won't support something that promotes our government working for one individual to develop one parcel of land. And I think it's, in my opinion, it is considered a form of corporate welfare. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Newhouse? Again, a, a comment directed at the selectmen and what we know and don't know. Uh, in regards to what we understand, I think we understand a whole lot more than maybe a few folks might give us credit for. If anybody here or elsewhere wants to sit and discuss on WCTV the intricacies of, of this statute, I'd be happy to do it, be happy to do it on televised debate. Aside from that, what the, the governing body here ought to be, uh, focused on is the policy and the reasons behind this change. And the fact of the matter is that this would allow us to avail ourselves of planning money, which enables the town to continue to be proactive in planning the future of Wilmington, particularly in regards to the I ninety-three corridor. And to me, that's a good thing, no matter who understands and doesn't understand the intricacies of a state statute.
Further discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, whether you agree with me or disagree with me on any budget item or anything like that, if I could just ask you to put that difference aside on this particular article and take this one personally. If I can liken this article in the potential of problems with this to our wells being shut down. We have an oil and site, a massive contaminated site. In between that site and our water wells, there was a buffer zone. On TV, we had a representative from the DEP stand up and state that there were two hundred monitoring wells that were drilled. It's my belief that these monitoring wells could have contributed to our pollution and our shutting down of our wells to allow the contamination to flow and those wells be acting as a conduit to allow it to flow into the aquifer. Now, I liken that to this project, okay, because I think that particular project over there was irresponsible for them to do that. What we have over here is we have probably a thousand times greater contaminated site, the Tuxbury landfill. In between that Tuxbury landfill and our Browns Crossing wellfields is a buffer zone. What's being asked of you today is to have that buffer zone disturbed. Our water flows from north to south. If you've been over Browns Crossing, you'll see that it comes from that direction. If you allow this development to take place, what you're inviting is contamination to one of our few wells that are left. Expediting something like this is truly irresponsible, and I'd like everyone here today to take that personally. There's no way that this thing should be run through and the rate of speed that it's being run through, and the governing body really should be this town meeting. And I hope today you shoot this article down. Do not let that contaminated site in Tuxbury and that buffer zone be a channel into our wellfields. Thank you.
Representative Misselli?
Uh, there've been questions at the outset. Uh, first, let me say that I have the utmost respect for, uh, the lady who spoke earlier. And, uh, so, not many people are as knowledgeable as she is relative to the zoning situation in the community. However, however, we enacted this general law. Uh, we knew it was fraught with controversy, and we felt, and, uh, before I speak positively on it, let me tell you about some of the problems. We felt that it should go back to the town meeting. They're the governing body. They should decide whether or not they want to accept it or not. And I think one thing that hasn't been brought out, and I think, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, the town council, he's of the same opinion that I am, that it goes with a particular parcel when you accept it. It's not for the whole town. Can I ask that through you?
Mr. Terentzis?
Yes, as usual, the representative is correct.
So, all we're talking about with this, thank you, council, all we're talking about relative to this is that particular parcel. We met a few weeks ago, the area towns, the area legislators, to discuss the, uh, new proposed Route ninety-three interchange. That meeting was called at my request, and I had a question for the communities. And the question was, would you hold back on the proposal if that interchange, uh, directs traffic onto some of the streets like Middlesex Ave, Salem Street, and, uh, South Street in Tuxbury? Because that's what I'm really worried about. And they were of the same mind that I am. They would oppose that interchange if traffic is directed into the, these areas. There's a bigger picture here, and the bigger picture is, the towns have looked at this, and they know there would be substantial development, substantial development. And I don't know who owns the land. I don't know who's buying the land. I don't know if anybody owns the land. I thought it might be the town's land, but I'm not sure. Uh, the town manager can answer that. What you're doing here is, you're allowing the community to rezone the property up there near ninety-three with a proposed interchange that may come to fruition. This thing might happen. Uh, it's closer than it's ever been before, but that still doesn't mean, uh, it's going to be, uh, built. You're developing the land so that it can be, uh, rezoning the land so that it can be developed, and you would have, uh, substantial, uh, development of a positive nature. So, from my perspective, to cut to the chase, knowing what I know about the article, and, you know, I've heard when I came in here, gee, we do this, we're going to be chasing this all over the community. No, it's only that area, and it's, once the go-ahead is given relative to the interchange, uh, it will coincide with rezoning of this property. Let me tell you, I'm not usually in sync with a lot of the people who are, uh, supporting this article, but it's everything they said it is. If you're going to have some substantial positive development in the area of this interchange, and by the way, if this interchange goes through and the develop, and the, uh, okay will be given on a federal and a state level, this is a substantial investment of seventy-five million dollars. So, Wilmington is only doing what Andover and Tuxbury are doing. They're doing the same thing, same article, same law. It only applies to that site, so I support it. I do.
Okay, before further discussion, I just want to make an announcement that the Strings Attached Food Concession will be closing in about, uh, twenty minutes. So, if you want to grab a piece of that pizza they have out there, you need to do it quickly. Further discussion, Mr. Sagal?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I, I understand the, uh, at least I, I'm, I'm attempting to understand the, the concept of this particular, uh, article, but I am concerned, as a member of one of the boards, that would be one of the permitting boards, for certain things that could occur there, on some of the timeframes that are, um, obligated by this expedited procedure. And this particular site, although I'm very, um, uh, positive on, on some positive development there, I am very concerned that with the, uh, expedited timeframe and the, um, the shortened version, or the shortened, uh, allowing, allowable time for review, uh, with this particular site, it could be problematic. I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes, sir.
Ed Loud for Val- Valen Lane. Uh, some of my concerns is what just Carl just said, but I got one question. Who owns this piece of property? Who's getting the, who's the benefactor of, uh, me losing some of my rights on, uh, voting on, uh, what goes there?
Mr. Sorrentino, maybe could we, do we know who the owner is? Hold on, hold. There you go.
Thank you. Uh, was originally owned by Mills Corporation and is now owned by Simon Properties.
Thank you.
Seth, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you.
Anyone, or anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak, Mr. McDonald has already spoken. No one? Yes, sir.
Just, uh, the question is, uh, what is it currently zoned at?
Ms. Hamilton, what's the current zone?
Mr. Moderator, I think I need to, um, resolve one, um, piece of information that is a bit correct, incorrect. This is not a rezoning article. It is currently zoned general industrial. This is not a rezoning article. It doesn't change the zoning there at all. Uh, what it does is it allows the town to establish an expedited permitting process that means that permitting of uses on this particular parcel can be done more quickly, and it allows the town access to the planning funds to decide what this site should be used for. Not only is this site going to be looked at, but there, this is an area of about seven hundred acres that will be provided access by a new interchange. The planning that will be done by the three communities will include, uh, overall planning for the entire area, not just one particular site, but the expedited permitting is just this site.
Mr. McDonald?
I just wanted to say that I don't believe these other towns have as big, a bigger potential deficit at stake as Wilmington, losing their wellfield. And, um, if you're not familiar with the Tuxbury site, it's a superfund site. Making it to our country's, uh, federal government superfund site, you have to be seriously contaminated to do that. And if you take a look at Wuburn, the way that they clean up these superfund sites, they don't clean them up. They put a Band-Aid over them. That's all that's going to happen with Tuxbury. You start doing excavation and digging and piping, you're just opening up conduits for contamination to come through. These developers have big, big bucks. And, uh, I don't know if Mr. Misselli would be aware of this. Um, I know that you're in charge of personnel at the State House, Mr. Misselli, but do lobbyists or do representatives have to report money from lobbyists from, say, big developers like this?
I hear the question. Absolutely, unequivocally. And I'll reiter- reiterate what I said, and I know there's, you want to concentrate on the issue. I don't know who owns the land. I don't know who lobbies for the land. I know you didn't ask that of me, but just in case there's any question out there, and I have no stake in this property, but you're, to answer your question, absolutely, unequivocally.
Uh, you, you do handle personnel, Misselli. Are you aware of any amount of money that was reported from this company or from, um, uh, people that you handle at the State House who have received money from lobbyists from this Simons Corporation to get this project pushed through?
That's almost laughable. Let me say this. I handle, what I'm, uh, what I take care of the people who work there. However, it's a public record. You can call the Ethics Commission, and that may even be online, I'm not sure, because everybody has to file an ethics report, and maybe we should do that locally. Everybody has to file an ethics report every year. So, you know, cut to the chase. So, you know, cut to the chase. What's your question?
Well, I think that's a valid concern. I mean, we've seen the transfer of parcels on Valid Vale Street being sold for multiple millions of dollars. These people have a serious financial stake in this matter. They don't want to lose their investment. They don't really care about us losing our wells. Do you think that, do you think the Simons Properties, the owners of the malls, really care that we're losing manufacturing jobs? They care about their retail sites. We've lost 46,000 manufacturing jobs, folks. These are the types of jobs that we need in our state. We don't need a mall on top of a mall on top of a mall. And that's what you're going to get with the, these people who own this site, okay? Take charge today, folks. Be responsible on at least one article. Shoot this down. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Francis Deck, 205 Salem Street. First, I would like to say I am very well aware of this so-called superfund up at Rocco's. And with all due respect to Mr. McDonald, I really don't believe that he should be used in scare tactics. All this here is about is property that will, in the future, be developed. I don't know who owns this, and I don't pretend to know all about this here article, but I do agree with the town. If the town wants to become involved with the development or to oversee it or whatever they need to do, this should be it. I mean, after all, I mean, we do have competent people on the planning board, et cetera, and we should adhere to what this, I'm almost positive, let me put it this way, I don't agree with everything that has taken place in the town, but this sounds like it's for the future, and the planning board has okayed it, as far as I know. The finance committee has okayed it. So I would say give them a chance. You know, land is land, and it's scarce. Most cities and towns are land poor. And if we have the opportunity, and you talk about industry and people losing their jobs, well, if they do put industry up there or whatever, wouldn't they create jobs? Maybe they'll give me a job, senior citizen's job. Thank you.
Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I don't think we, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of what this is, and it gives us the same opportunity that Andover has already taken at their meeting, and that I fully expect Tewksbury will take at their meeting next week. As the representative indicated, the entire legislative delegation met with all of the managers, with Congresswoman Songus, with the planning directors, with the representatives in the various planning agencies, and they were unanimous in their support that this can be a very good thing, but to find out if it's going to be a good thing, we need to go forward and take advantage, each community, of up to $150,000 of planning money. That will all be a part of this environmental review that will take place. So I think it's very important that we not forsake the option of having the ability to know more about this site and to make a reasonable and informed decision. I would urge that the voters adopt this article.
Mrs. Linehan.
Yes, sir. I would like to, was there a general public meeting on this? I know there were some people that did go to all of these meetings, and one of them was, I believe at that time, Sir Lutman Sullivan. Was there a general public meeting on this? And I would ask that through you, perhaps to the finance committee, why they evoked approval on it? Or whoever.
I know, I know that there was a public hearing on the warrant of this, both with the finance committee and with the planning board. Was there another meeting other than the regular meetings for preparation for the town meeting? Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you. The town has been engaged with Tewksbury and Andover in meetings about this area and the interchange for a number of years. We formed about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, a tri-town task force that meets several times a year. The meetings are public, they're all posted, and...
As a town engineer, but we do have one, the Director of Engineering Services, and three others, one of them just filled a vacancy.
So you're saying there's only two engineers in town? Because I look at...
No, four, one plus three, four.
The problem I have with this article is, we have all these engineers on our staff, and for a simple sewer line, they can't design it. We have to pay $122,000 to subcontract it out. Maybe what we should do is subcontract all our engineering out, because if we're hiring engineers that can't do a simple sewer line, what can they do? This is pretty much in line with many other things I've been saying today. You're hiring people to perform a duty that they can't do. The ambulance has to call another real ambulance. All right? Some people are not aware of this, what's going on. Mrs. Zoukis, she got up and started saying that I don't know what I'm talking about. But I do know, and I've had, had to call an ambulance.
Mr. McDonald, we're on an...
Then they got to call a real ambulance.
We're on an engineering line.
Now we got to call a real engineer.
Mr. McDonald, thank you. We're on Article Number Nine. Further discussion, Ms. Sullivan.
I was wondering, I support the sewer interceptor construction project to fix the problems that are there, but I had a specific question for the town manager, Mr. Moderator, regarding the Lowell Street Sewer Project that didn't happen. What happened to that appropriation, and why isn't that appropriation going to this project if that project never happened?
Mr. Kira.
That, that was an authorization to borrow, and we never borrowed the money.
Further discussion, we're ready for the vote. Article Number Nine, $122,000 is the amount. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article Number Ten, which is the blue single-sheet handout that you should have received when you came in, in the foyer area. Does everybody have, have the handout? Great. We're on Article Number Ten. To see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year 2008 operating budget from other line items of said budget and from other available funds or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $580,000 be transferred from the following fiscal year 2008 accounts. Police salary, lieutenants, $40,000. Public safety central dispatch personnel services, $15,000. Public Works Personnel Services Engineer Full-Time, $25,000. Public Works Contractual Services Rubbish Collection and Disposal, $100,000. Public Buildings Other Salaries, $20,000. Unclassified and Reserve Insurance, $30,000. Unclassified and Reserve Employee Health and Life Insurance, $300,000. Unclassified Reserve Professional and Technical Services, $50,000. A total of $580,000 to the following fiscal year 2008 accounts. Fire Salary Overtime, $85,000. Public Works Contractual Services Snow and Ice Miscellaneous Services, $60,000. Public Works Materials and Supplies Gas Oil and Tires Other, $40,000. Public Works Materials and Supplies Gas Oil Tires DPW, $20,000. Public Works Materials and Supplies Snow and Ice Sand and Salt, $55,000. Public Buildings Heating Fuel, $290,000. Public Buildings Electricity, $30,000. Also for a total of $580,000.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation is approval. You have the sheet, so I'm not going to reread you the items. Here's the discussion. Ready for the vote? Those in favor of Article Ten as presented signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article Number Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town senior citizens' tax work-off program or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Lepore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $15,360 be raised and appropriated for the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of providing senior citizens' work opportunities for services rendered in the town in accordance with the town senior citizen tax work-off program.
Thank you. The amount is $15,360. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation is approval. Discussion? Those in favor, oh, yes, sir. Mr. Bodnar, I believe.
Mike Bodnar, I'd like to know someone up there on this work-off program, senior citizens, how many seniors does this program take from seniors in town? Is it 10, 20, 40?
Mr. Kira.
It varies based upon the appropriation, but we're anticipating that at least 24 seniors would be able to take advantage of this program in fiscal year '09.
But if magically 100 would apply...
No, in fact, that's not correct. We have had years where not as many, that we've had funds not used, you know, short amount of dollars, but...
I understand that, but if, if it was better advertised and more seniors wanted to be available to this work-off program, if you automatically had or magically had 100 seniors appearing next week...
They would have, with all due respect, here's how it's advertised. It goes to every single home in the town via Town Topics. It's discussed and provided over at the elderly services department and as well as the town hall.
Excuse me, sir, he's, he's speaking. If you could let him finish, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
It is put in the newspaper, and it has also been put on the Rotary Board. So I think it is well advertised, and we receive folks who are interested each year, and we've been able to try to provide funding for those based upon the interest that we've had each year. There have been cases when one or two people might not have been selected, but generally everybody who avails themselves to work, who's qualified to do the, to do the work, who qualifies under the policy that, you know, is allowed, is allowed to work.
I think it's a very, very good program. I'm not denying it. What, the only thing, and I don't believe you still addressed it, if you had, were inundated with 100 seniors, could you put them to work?
No.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're on Article Number Eleven, the amount of $15,360. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article Number Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Smaglia.
Moderator. I move that $6,000 be raised and appropriated from fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
$6,000 is the amount. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation is approval. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. And I just noted, noticed that another member of our legislative delegation has joined us, and I'd like to welcome and thank Representative Jim Maselli for joining us today. Thank you.[1425.21][1425.21][applause] We're on Article Number Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, the sum of $750 each, a total of $1,500, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section Nine of Chapter Forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neelsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse Inc. in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $1,000, $1,500 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year '09 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section Nine of Chapter Forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neelsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse Inc. in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $1,500. Finance Committee Recommendation, approval. Discussion. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I'm wondering if somebody can answer the question, maybe our town council. If the town is partaking in funding these places, and there's, let's say, a drunken brawl and injuries, does the town's insurance cover that? And can you tell us a little bit about liability, responsibility for the town?
Mr. Durensis? Question is on the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse and the American Legion Clubhouse. If I'm hearing the question right, Miss, does the town have any liability to incidents that happen at those halls? The answer was no.
Thank you.
We're on Article Number Thirteen, $1,500. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section 53E, one half for the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section 53E and a half as follows. First, a compost bin revolving fund with the established spending limit of $4,500, with the source of revenue being the sale of compost bins. The spending authority being the town manager, and the purpose for the money may be spent in the purchase of compost bins. Second, a subsurface sewer disposal upgrade revolving fund with an established spending limit of $200,000, with the source of revenue being embedment receipts and other loan repayments from property owners participating in said program. The purpose of expenditures being the repair and upgrade of subsurface sewer disposal systems and the repayment to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust of any funds advanced to the town for this purpose, and the spending authority being the Board of Health with approval of the town manager.
Thank you. The amounts of 45, the spending limits of $4,500 for the compost bin revolving fund and $200 for the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation, approval. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. That concludes, or this will start the random selection process.
Excuse me, Mrs. Stewart?
Yes, what purpose do you rise, Mr. McDonald?
I just have a question on our budget before we continue.
We've, we've completed the budget, Mr. McDonald. The budget is over.
Can't bring it up for reconsideration?
You can make a motion to reconsider a specific line item, yes.
I just have a question first, if you don't mind.
No, I, no, I can't allow a question. We've completed the budget process. That article is done for the day unless we reconsider, Mr. McDonald.
I make a motion to reconsider it.
Reconsider what?
The entire budget.
Since we voted on Article Five to take up the budget by specific line item, that motion's out of order, Mr. McDonald. Okay, this begins our random selection process, ladies and gentlemen, so we're now on Article Number Nineteen. Article Number Nineteen, which is on page sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and page twenty. Don't worry, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. To see if the town will vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-three D, Sections One through Sixteen, expedited permitting, or to take any other action related thereto. Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-three D, Section One states that notwithstanding any general or special law charter provision by law ordinance to the contrary, this chapter shall apply upon its acceptance by a city or town. Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-three D, Section Two states that the following word shall, unless the context clearly requires otherwise, have the following meanings. I'm not going to read all of that to you, but I will draw your attention, ladies and gentlemen, to page twenty, the last paragraph. And to see if the town will designate the following parcel of land as a priority development site in the town of Wilmington for expedited municipal permitting within the meaning of general... general law, Chapter Forty-Three D, and approve the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for designation of such parcel as a priority development site or take any other action in relation thereto. Land on the west side of Interstate Ninety-Three, identified assessor's map, R-two parcel sixteen, comprising a total of twenty-three acres. The map on this article, ladies and gentlemen, could be found on page thirty-five if you're looking for the parcel. Is there a motion? Mr. Sorrentino.
I move, I move that the provisions of Chapter Forty-Three D, Sections One through sixteen of the general laws be accepted and to designate the following parcel of land as a priority development site in the town of Wilmington for expedited municipal permitting within the meaning of general law, Chapter Forty-Three D, and to approve the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for designation of such parcel as a priority development site. Land on the west side of Interstate Route Ninety-Three, identified as assessor's map, R-dash-two, parcel sixteen, comprising of a total of twenty-three acres.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. The description of the parcel is the same as is in the booklet?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Approval.
Approval and Planning Board recommendation?
Approval.
Is obviously approval. Discussion, Mr. Sorrentino.
Moderator, I'm going to give the floor to the Planning Director.
Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, an act that was passed by the legislator, legislature several years ago to authorize communities to designate as priority development sites certain sites within the community. The one that has been chosen for this designation is on the west side of Route I-Ninety-Three. The town has been engaged with the communities of Tuxbury and Andover in a planning exercise, which is resulting in the petition for an interchange, a new interchange between Dascom Road and Route One Twenty-Five. The designation of the site on the west side of the highway as a priority development site limits its use until there is an interchange. So the development, because there is no access from the west side, there will be no development there until the interchange is approved. What this does is give the town the opportunity to apply for planning funds up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for planning how this site could eventually be used.
I'll set for a discussion, Ms. Sullivan.
At the public hearing, I had requested, well, I asked the Board of Selectmen that were present there at that time and if they understood what their role was in this article. Mr. Newhouse stood up and said that he wasn't a hundred percent sure, but that he was going to look into it and make sure that he understood. At that time, Mr. Fiore didn't seem like he understood his role and the only other selectman that was there that did not speak was Mr. Smaglia. And through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask Mr. Smaglia if he understands what his role is in this article.
Point of privilege, Mr. Moderator.
What's your point of privilege, Mr. Newhouse?
I was quoted and I'd like to clarify that before anybody else is...
Your position?
Absolutely. I'm not going to stand here and tell you I can remember exactly what statement I made at that meeting, but I can tell you that my position is this. We have town council to review the applicable laws. The Board of Selectmen has voted every year to take advice of council, take advice of the town administrative people. When and if the Board of Selectmen is involved in this process and this article is passed, which I very much believe it ought to be passed, you can be rest assured that the Board of Selectmen will know exactly what its role is, exactly what its jurisdiction is, and, you know, I'm not going to stand here and spend all this time reviewing a statute to banter back and forth about whether or not I or any other member understands the nuances of this statute. Privately capable of doing that, it's what I do for a living, but I'll rely on town council for that and we'll make policy decisions in accordance with the law if this thing is passed. Thank you.
Mr. Fiore? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I think Suzanne, you asked me twice if I understood it and I thought I said yes as opposed to what you just said, that I did not. And I also further went on to say that there are complex laws. I deal with complex laws and every little bit is, but for the gist of the most of it, I more than understood it and not to further this debate, but thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Smaglia?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, I too am not a hundred percent sure of all the complex laws that'll be going on as I'm not an expert on everything, but just as every issue that I've ever voted on, I've done my homework, I've taken recommendations of council and every other thing and I'm sure I will do that if this article is passed too, Ms. Sullivan.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Sullivan.
Well, I, I'm a little concerned because I still haven't gotten a clear answer from any of the selectmen that have spoken so far as whether or not they understand what their role is. And you have a specific role in this article as the governing body. The governing body is mentioned thirty-five times in this article of what you need to do. Like, for instance, the governing body, after approval by town meeting in a town, shall file a formal proposal with the board. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that you guys have to do and it seems like you're just going to rely on everybody else to do it and then give a rubber stamp of approval. And I guess I take issue to that. Furthermore, I see this article, and if I were a developer in town, I don't think I'd like this article because it gives preferential treatment to somebody else. You know, for what reason? For what purpose? To help them develop their property? I see this as almost a form of corporate welfare. What this town has to do, the hoops that this town's going to have to do, our town employees, including the Board of Selectmen, to promote the development of one parcel of land, I think is wrong. I won't support something that promotes our government working for one individual to develop one parcel of land. And I think it's, in my opinion, it is considered a form of corporate welfare. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Newhouse.
Again, a comment directed at the selectmen and what we know and don't know. In regards to what we understand, I think we understand a whole lot more than maybe a few folks might give us credit for. If anybody here or elsewhere wants to sit and discuss on WCTV the intricacies of this statute, I'd be happy to do it, be happy to do it on televised debate. Aside from that, what the governing body here ought to be focused on is the policy and the reasons behind this change. And the fact of the matter is that this would allow us to avail ourselves of planning money, which enables the town to continue to be proactive in planning the future of Wilmington, particularly in regards to the I-Ninety-Three corridor. And to me, that's a good thing, no matter who understands and doesn't understand the intricacies of a state statute.
Further discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, whether you agree with me or disagree with me on any budget item or anything like that, if I could just ask you to put that difference aside on this particular article and take this one personally. If I can liken this article in the potential of problems with this to our wells being shut down. We have an oil in sight, a massive contaminated site. In between that site and our water wells, there was a buffer zone. On TV, we had a representative from the DEP stand up and state that there were two hundred monitoring wells that were drilled. It's my belief that these monitoring wells could have contributed to our pollution and our shutting down of our wells to allow the contamination to flow and those wells be acting as a conduit to allow it to flow into the aquifer. Now, I liken that to this project, okay, because I think that particular project over there was irresponsible for them to do that. What we have over here is we have probably a thousand times greater contaminated site, the Tuxbury landfill. In between that Tuxbury landfill and our Browns Crossing wellfields is a buffer zone. What's being asked of you today is to have that buffer zone disturbed. Our water flows from north to south. If you've been over Browns Crossing, you'll see that it comes from that direction. If you allow this development to take place, what you're inviting is contamination to one of our few wells that are left. Expediting something like this is truly irresponsible and I'd like everyone here today to take that personally. There's no way that this thing should be run through and the rate of speed that is being run through and the governing body really should be this town meeting. And I hope today you shoot this article down. Do not let that contaminated site in Tuxbury and that buffer zone be a channel into our wellfields. Thank you.
Representative Mocelli.
There've been questions at the outset. First, let me say that I have the utmost respect for the lady who spoke earlier. And so, not many people are as knowledgeable as she is relative to the zoning situation in the community. However, however, we enacted this general law. We knew it was fraught with controversy and we felt, and before I speak positively on it, let me tell you about some of the problems. We felt that it should go back to the town meeting. They're the governing body, they should decide whether or not they want to accept it or not. And I think one thing that hasn't been brought out, and I think through you, Mr. Moderator, the town council, he's of the same opinion that I am, that it goes with a particular parcel. When you accept it, it's not for the whole town. Can I ask that through you?
Mr. Durentis.
Yes, as usual, the representative is correct.
So all we're talking about with this, thank you, council, all we're talking about relative to this is that particular parcel. We met a few weeks ago, the area towns, the area legislators, to discuss the new proposed Route Ninety-Three interchange. That meeting was called at my request and I had a question for the communities. And the question was, would you hold back on the proposal if that interchange directs traffic onto some of the streets like Middlesex Ave, Salem Street, and South Street in Tuxbury? Because that's what I'm really worried about. And they were of the same mind that I am. They would oppose that interchange if traffic is directed into the, these areas. There's a bigger picture here and the bigger picture is, the towns have looked at this and they know there would be substantial development, substantial development. And I don't know who owns the land, I don't know who's buying the land, I don't know if anybody owns the land. I thought it might be the town's land, but I'm not sure. The town manager can answer that. What you're doing here is you're allowing the community to rezone the property up there near Ninety-Three with a proposed interchange that may come to fruition. This thing might happen. It's closer than it's ever been before, but that still doesn't mean it's going to be built. You're developing the land so that it can be, rezoning the land so that it can be developed. And you would have substantial development of a positive nature. So from my perspective, to cut to the chase, knowing what I know about the article, and you know, I've heard when I came in here, gee, we do this, we're going to be chasing this all over the community. No, it's only that area and it's, once the go-ahead is given relative to the interchange, it will coincide with the rezoning of this property. Let me tell you, I'm not usually in sync with a lot of the people who are supporting this article, but it's everything they said it is. If you're going to have some substantial positive development near the area of this interchange, and by the way, if this interchange goes through and the develop, and the okay will be given on a federal and a state level, is a substantial investment of seventy-five million dollars. So Wilmington is only doing what Andover and Tuxbury are doing. They're doing the same thing, same article, same law. It only applies to that site, so I support it. I do.
Okay, before further discussion, I just want to make an announcement that the Strings Attached Food Concession will be closing in about twenty minutes. So if you want to grab a piece of that pizza they have out there, you need to do it quickly. Further discussion, Mr. Sagal.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I understand the, at least I'm attempting to understand the concept of this particular article, but I am concerned as a member of one of the boards, that would be one of the permitting boards, for certain things that could occur there on some of the timeframes that are obligated by this expedited procedure. And this particular site, although I'm very, I'm positive on some positive development there, I am very concerned that with the expedited timeframe and the shortened version or the shortened allowable time for review, with this particular site, it could be problematic. I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes, sir.
Ed Loud for Valen Lane. Some of my concerns is what just Carl just said, but I got one question. Who owns this piece of property? Who's getting the, who's the benefactor of me losing some of my rights on voting on what goes there?
Mr. Sorrentino, maybe? Could we, do we know who the owner is?
This is originally owned by Mills Corporation and is now owned by Simon Properties.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you.
Anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak. Mr. McDonald has already spoken. No one? Yes, sir.
Just the question is, what is it currently zoned at?
Ms. Hamilton, what's the current zone?
Mr. Moderator, I think I need to resolve one piece of information that is a bit correct, incorrect. This is not a rezoning article. It is currently zoned general industrial. This is not a rezoning article. It doesn't change the zoning there at all. What it does is it allows the town to establish an expedited permitting process that means that permitting of uses on this particular parcel can be done more quickly and it allows the town access to the planning funds to decide what this site should be used for. Not only is this site going to be looked at, but this is an area of about seven hundred acres that will be provided access by a new interchange. The planning that will be done by the three communities will include overall planning for the entire area, not just one particular site. But the expedited permitting is just this site.
Mr. McDonald.
I just wanted to say that I don't believe these other towns have as big, a bigger potential deficit at stake as Wilmington, losing their wellfield. And if you're not familiar with the Tuxbury site, it's a superfund site. Making it to our country's federal government superfund site, you have to be seriously contaminated to do that. And if you take a look at Wuburn, the way that they clean up these superfund sites, they don't clean them up. They put a Band-Aid over them. That's all that's going to happen with Tuxbury. You start doing excavation and digging and piping, you're just opening up conduits for contamination to come through. These developers have big, big bucks. And I don't know if Mr. Mocelli would be aware of this. I know that you're in charge of personnel at the State House, Mr. Mocelli, but do lobbyists or do representatives have to report money from lobbyists from, say, big developers like this?
Representative?
I hear the question. Absolutely, unequivocally. And I'll reiterate what I said, and I know there's, you want to concentrate on the issue. I don't know who owns the land, I don't know who lobbies for the land. I know you didn't ask that of me, but just in case there's any question out there, and I have no stake in this property, but to answer your question, absolutely, unequivocally.
You do handle personnel, Mr. Mocelli. Are you aware of any amount of money that was reported from this company or from people that you handle at the State House who have received money from lobbyists from this Simons Corporation to get this project pushed through?
That's almost laughable. Let me say this. I handle, what I'm, what I take care of the people who work there. However, it's a public record. You can call the Ethics Commission and that may even be online, I'm not sure, because everybody has to file an ethics report and maybe we should do that locally. Everybody has to file an ethics report every year. So, you know, cut to the chase. What's your question?
Well, I think that's a valid concern. I mean, we've seen the transfer of parcels on Valid Vale Street being sold for... I mean, we've seen the transfer of parcels on Valid Vale Street being sold for multiple millions of dollars. These people have a serious financial stake in this matter. They don't want to lose their investment. They don't really care about us losing our wells. Do you think that, do you think that Simons Properties, the owners of the malls, really care that we're losing manufacturing jobs? They care about their retail sites. We've lost 46,000 manufacturing jobs, folks. These are the types of jobs that we need in our state. We don't need a mall on top of a mall on top of a mall. And that's what you're going to get with these people who own this site, okay? Take charge today, folks. Be responsible on at least one article. Shoot this down. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Frances Deck, 205 Salem Street. First, I would like to say I am very well aware of this so-called superfund up at Rockos. And with all due respect to Mr. McDonald, I really don't believe that he should be using scare tactics. All this here is about, is property that will, in the future, be developed. I don't know who owns this, and I don't pretend to know all about this here article, but I do agree with the town. If the town wants to become involved with the development, or to oversee it, or whatever they need to do, this should be it. I mean, after all, I mean, we do have competent people on the planning board, et cetera, and we should adhere to what this, I'm almost positive, let me put it this way, I don't agree with everything that has taken place in the town, but this sounds like it's for the future, and the planning board has okayed it, as far as I know, the finance committee has okayed it. So I would say give them a chance. You know, land is land, and it's scarce. Most cities and towns are land poor. And if we have the opportunity, and you talk about industry and people losing their jobs, well, if they do put industry up there or whatever, wouldn't that create jobs? Maybe they'll give me a job, senior citizen's job. Thank you.
Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I don't think we, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of what this is, and it gives us the same opportunity that Andover has already taken at their meeting, and that I fully expect Tewksbury will take at their meeting next week. As the representative indicated, the entire legislative delegation met with all of the managers, with Congresswoman Songus, with the planning directors, with the representatives in the various planning agencies, and they were unanimous in their support that this can be a very good thing, but to find out if it's going to be a good thing, we need to go forward and take advantage, each community, of up to $150,000 of planning money. That will all be a part of this environmental review that will take place. So I think it's very important that we not forsake the option of having the ability to know more about this site and to make a reasonable and informed decision. I would urge that the voters adopt this article.
Mrs. Linehan.
Yes, sir. I would like to, was there a general public meeting on this? I know there were some people that did go to all of these meetings, and one of them was, I believe at that time, Selectman Sullivan. Was there a general public meeting on this? And I would ask that through you, perhaps to the finance committee, why they evoted approval on it? Or whoever.
I know, I know that there was a public hearing on the warrant of this, both with the finance committee and with the planning board. Was there another meeting other than the regular meetings for preparation for the town meeting? Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you. The town has been engaged with Tewksbury and Andover in meetings about this area and the interchange for a number of years. We formed about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, a tri-town task force that meets several times a year. The meetings are public, they're all posted, and we do discuss the progress of where the interchange is going, the development of the site. All of these things have been discussed for over two years at this point. Actually, this whole process started with a Burt Road extension 25 years ago. So this area is being, has been under discussion for a long time.
Mrs. Linehan.
Well, that answers part of my question. I have some concerns, and the next part of it would be, is this juxtaposing itself to more of the smart planning? Which I didn't think the plan out in North Wilmington was that smart. May I ask out of the planning board, please?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Is it part of the?
Well, we've been doing all of these things so quick, and we've done it under, tried to do it under smart planning. The people who came to the meetings are beginning to get wise to some of it and doesn't think that it's really smart planning. I'm merely asking, is this coming under that vernacular of another smart plan?
Mrs. Hamilton.
I think the term that Mrs. Linehan is referring to is smart growth. It's a, it's a term that has been adopted by the state for sensible planning of density in areas where there is infrastructure to support it. What will result in this particular planning effort will be a plan that is tailored for this particular area, for the uses that are currently there, for anticipated uses, direction in which the development should go. It will incorporate a lot of techniques. One is smart, is smart growth. Another one is green construction, protecting the wetlands and the species that are out there.
I thank you, sir, and I thank you, Carol. We voted down the town meeting, those of us that were here, the smart planning. And I am going to ask you to please vote this down. It can come up again next year, and let's have some more public meetings on it. The town has always been good about doing that and giving people access, not just people appointed by boards to go to these meetings. And I know that you can go when the articles are being gone over. I appreciate that. But I'm going to ask that you put this off and think about it. If it's as much smart planning as we got out in North Wilmington, I would like to ask you not to vote for it.
Ms. Sullivan.
I'll be brief. Building millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure into undeveloped land is the epitome of sprawl. It is not smart growth.
Mr. McDonald, you've already spoken twice on this, so that's it for this article.
Personal privilege, Mr. Stewart.
Excuse me?
Personal privilege.
What's the personal privilege?
I was, Mrs. Deck said that I was using a scare tactic, and this isn't a tactic, folks. It's not anything used to scare you. Wilmington is a key cog in this whole plan, okay? A proper presentation to you people today would have a list of chemicals found at the Tewksbury site. It would give you distances to our wellfield. It would give topographical conditions. I haven't seen any of that today. This is a completely irresponsible proposal. It's deficient, and it's really an insult. It should be an insult to everybody here to have something like this come before the town without a proper presentation. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? I'd ask the tellers to take their places, please. I'd like to, for a discussion on both sides, I'd like to get this as a standing count. All those in favor of Article 19 as presented, signify by rising at your place. Those opposed to Article 19 as presented, signify by rising at your place. They're still counting. The vote is as follows, 70 in the affirmative, 48 in the negative. We're on Article Number 18. On page 15, ladies and gentlemen. See, the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following new section, 10.3, Board of Appeals. The town of Wilmington Board of Appeals is hereby designated as the Board of Appeals required by Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws as constituted on the date of the acceptance of this recertification. This recertification shall replace any and all prior actions of the town regarding the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals shall also act as the Board of Appeals required under the provisions of Section 81Z of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended relating to subdivision control. Appointment of members, the Board of Appeals shall consist of five members nominated and appointed by the Board of Selectmen. There shall be no associate members of the Board of Appeals. Terms, appointment shall be for three-year terms, so arranged that the term of no more than two members shall expire each year. Residency and removal of members, members of the Board of Appeals shall be residents of the town of Wilmington and shall hold office during such residence until their successors are duly qualified and may be removed for just cause after hearing by the Board of Selectmen. Vacancies, to be filled by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Appeals shall act on all matters over which it has jurisdiction and in the manner prescribed by the following provisions. To hear and decide appeals for any decisions of the inspector of buildings. To hear and decide applications for special permits, except as otherwise provided in this bylaw. To hear and decide petitions for variances from this bylaw. To hear and decide applications under Section 81E of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the issuance of a permit for the erection of a building on a lot in a subdivision approval under the subdivision control law, and on a lot not on a way placed on or made part of the official map when the board finds that enforcement of the foregoing provision would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, and that the circumstances do not require that the building be related to a way shown on a subdivision plan or the official map. To take action on any other matter as may be assigned to the board by the general laws or the bylaws of the town, or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Lepore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to know any change that, on that, I'd like to have under the provision of 10.33, under the recommendation of the town council.
And what is the change, Mr. Lepore?
Under the terms, appointment shall be for terms of such length and so arranged that the term member shall expire each year.
So one, one term member shall expire each year, so five members, one each year. Okay. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is approval? Planning Board recommendation? Is approval? Discussion? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Sagal.
When I went, when I went to school, we were taught that government departments and things had, were supposed to be a form of checks and balances, and my exception is that the selectmen appoint the Board of Appeals. I thought the duty of the Board of Appeals was to be an independent hearing panel for objections to things that other parts of the departments had approved of, and I think it needs to be elected, and so that they're not under, I can't think of the word, under, as appointed, rather, I don't think they should be appointed, I think they should be elected.
Okay, thank you. Just for point of clarification, the Board of Appeals is responsible for actions relating primarily to the building inspector and planning.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're going to have, if you're going to have them also appoint the appeals board, then you, you don't have any checks, anything to balance out the thing. It's all still related or connected in it. You don't have a way to have an independent processing, thought process to, to weigh each side independently. They're, they're all with, you know, they're all going to be of the same thought.
Further discussion? Further discussion, Mr. Loud.
Mr. Moderator, my name's Ed Loud. I am a regular member of the Board of Appeals in town. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I actually like this article. I have a couple of questions, and I apologize, they might have been asked at some of the public meetings. As a member of the Board of Appeals, there are some decisions that we have to make that are voted for, that have to be voted for by two-thirds or unanimous, and how does a five-member board change that, if at all? I believe it does, but I, I don't know the ramifications of those votes.
Mr. Newhouse.
I would defer to council if there's some instances or examples that I'm forgetting, but as a general proposition, the special permit and variance granting authority that the Board of Appeals has now that requires a unanimous vote would then require a supermajority vote. Under Chapter 40B, the votes that now require a majority vote, I believe, still require a majority.
Mr. Newhouse, what do you mean by supermajority? Is that like four to one, three to two? I don't understand that.
That's right, depending on the number of members presiding, but if five permanent members were presiding over a case, then four out of the five, yes. If four were presiding, then three out of the four.
Thank you. Other than that, I think this is a good article for the town. Thank you.
Mr. Sagal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm an associate member of the Board of Appeals. I also, I think this is a fine article, but I had a question about 10.33. I, maybe I missed something, but if you have a three-year appointment and you have one person reappointed every year, and there's five people on the board, I think there'll be a problem with the math.
Right, I believe that the way that was worded was to have them not, Mr. Lepore, one each year, is that correct? For five-year terms?
Five-year terms.
So you changed it to five years.
Five-year terms.
So if they started today and had five members, I'm assuming one member would have a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year term to start, and then they would all become five years after that, so that you'd have one member, one new member each year being either newly appointed or reappointed.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? Article Number 18. This requires a two-thirds. I'm going to try a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 18 as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We're on Article Number 28. We're on Article number twenty-eight. Which is on page thirty-two. And the map for this article, ladies and gentlemen, is on page forty-one. To see if the town will vote to relinquish, sell, and convey a portion of certain easement's rights held by the town in a parcel of land identified as parcel two N on Assessor's Map Five and being further described here and after for a price to be determined by the town assessor. Description, an area described as easement area to be abandoned consisting of one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven plus or minus square feet of land as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land of Wilmington, Mass. dated May tenth, two thousand and seven, Haze Engineering, Inc., Civil Engineers, and Land Surveyors, being a portion of an easement for drainage granted to the town of Wilmington by Marque Lopez, trustee of Marque Realty Trust, which grant of easement dated April ninth, nineteen ninety-six, and is recorded with Middlesex North Registry of Deeds at Book eight-two-nine-six, page two fifty-six, in which easement is further described as a parcel land of Wilmington, Massachusetts, describing and conveying drainage easement rights to the town of Wilmington as shown on definitive subdivision plan entitled Plan of Land Lots fifteen through twenty-six Marion Street, Wilmington, Mass., H-Star Engineering, Inc., dated March fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four, with revisions through July eighth, nineteen ninety-four, which plan is recorded with Middlesex North Registry of Deeds in Plan Book one ninety-two, page one oh six, and which easement area is bounded and described as follows, I'll spare you the bounding descriptions or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town relinquish, sell, and convey a portion of certain easement rights held by the town in a parcel of land identified as parcel two N on Assessor's Map Five for a price to be determined by the town assessor, such area being described as an area described as easement.
Mr. Grant, does your motion readers is in the booklet?
There are two minor revisions in the next two lines, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, what are those?
The fifteen hundred and thirty-seven square feet has been reduced to fourteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
The date of the plan has been revised to read dated March eleventh, two thousand and eight, revised March thirteenth, two thousand and eight, and revised March twenty-fourth, two thousand and eight.
Great, that's all the changes?
Yes, sir.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Planning Board recommendation is approval, since this is a disposition of town property. Mr. Town Manager, your declaration of surplus?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, excuse me, yes, we are determining that this is surplus to the needs of the town contingent upon the town meeting receiving a satisfactory replacement drainage easement on said parcel, and in fact, the Board of Selectmen receives such, and it is being held in escrow pending the decision of this meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Moynihan, has the Assessor's Office determined a fair value for the easement?
Moderator, the Board of Assessors has determined a fair market value for the amendment of the easement to be one thousand four hundred dollars.
And Mr. Grant, are you acceptable to the fourteen hundred dollars as being part of your main motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Great, we're all set, ready to go. Discussion, Mr. Grant.
Thank you. Attorney Scott Grant, on behalf of Robert and Karen Farrell, the primary petitioners, they reside at eighty-one Marion Street, Mr. Moderator, and at the time of the purchase of their property, the easement to the town that was given by the developer encumbered a significant portion of their property. They would like to use a small portion of the easement area located near their house, and as indicated by the Town Manager, in exchange, have agreed to grant an area at the back of their property to the town for potential future use, and the areas, the area they're looking to gain is fourteen hundred square feet, the area they have agreed to grant to the town is fourteen oh one.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? We're on Article twenty-eight, this requires a two-thirds, we'll try a voice vote here. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight is presented signified by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number twenty-four. Article twenty-four, which is on page thirty-one. To see if the town will pass an article to give tax relief to seniors sixty-five and older to receive a five percent reduction on tax bills. Also to be included is a five percent increase every five-year period, i.e. that is sixty-five equals five percent, seventy equals ten percent, seventy-five equals fifteen percent. Requirements, five years Wilmington residency and homeownership or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Bartner? If you could just read for me, Mr. Bartner, that I moved that the town? If you could just say that for me, I moved that the town?
Oh, I moved that the town.
And does your motion continue as is in the booklet? Yes, thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is disapproval. Discussion, Mr. Bartner?
Kind of gonna be rusty at this, so you'll have to pardon me. I say I'm going to be a little rusty at this, but you'll have to pardon me. As I proposed this article to the members here, and that's all of you, from eight to eighty, so to speak, I realize that the taxes, our property taxes in this town, they're acceptable, but some of the seniors in here are having a difficult time. I mean, through their working career, they weren't privy to the IRAs and the 401Ks, and the wages that they were paid during their working career did not, are not keeping up abreast with today's taxes. So by allowing the town, if it's approved by the members here this afternoon, five percent decrease when you're sixty-five, from sixty-five to seventy, you get five percent off a year. I've done a little homework, and I've gotten the registered voters list from the town, been provided with it, and I've got the Board of Assessors book, and I've highlighted those who are sixty-five, those who are seventy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the numbers that I've come up with are amazing. There may be a lot of what we think is a lot of sixty-five-plus people in town, but a lot of us, a lot of us in town have transferred the ownership to our children or sold the houses, even though we still remain in town. Our average tax bill in town, and I think everyone here will agree, is, according to statistics from the town, is thirty-nine hundred dollars a year. I'll round it off to four thousand dollars a year. For the first five years, we will be getting a two hundred dollar tax break. When you turn seventy, you get another two hundred dollars. By the time you're seventy-five, you may be in that retirement home, you may be in Florida, or you may be at Wildwood Street, who knows? But what I'm looking for is approval by the residents today to have our Board of Selectmen, the town, anyone else who could put this through. There's a small understanding that this may be an illegal article, but I'd like the members here to approve it. And we're all going to be sixty-five at some point, and whether we live in town or another town, it's inevitable. We are going to be sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty, others older, but I feel that the seniors deserve a tax break, not only in Wilmington, but everywhere. And I could probably add more, but I think you know where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartner. Mr. McDonald?
I'd like to commend Mr. Bartner for his efforts here. You know, he's a nice guy, he's just a regular guy who comes and tries to help you people out, and I'd like to point out the latter part of this article where it says, "Take any other action related thereto," because I've too heard that this wouldn't pass legal status as far as moving on taxes, that it's the job of the General Court in our state. However, I think Mr. Bartner's making a valiant effort here to make a statement to our legislature. And my question is for our Town Council, is there anything that we could do if this is out of order with our state statutes that would help Mr. Bartner, such as making an amendment that could possibly be effective in passing some help for our seniors?
Mr. Durensis?
Taxation is a matter of state law, and taxation has to be uniform across the state. So it is unfortunately not the jurisdiction of the town of Wilmington to decide to give tax relief to any particular class of people. It is within the purview of the General Court to address this issue statewide, and the avenue that I would suggest is to discuss this with your state representative and your state senator, and see what can be done for everyone across the state.
Mr. Durensis, is there anything that you'd recommend that we could do, such as amending this article, that would help Mr. Bartner get what he's trying to accomplish before the General Court, so that they could actually be motivated to do something, which really hasn't been done for a long time? Is there anything such as an abatement or some type of amendment that would change the wording to say, give people that are seniors the ability to have an abatement?
You could make this into a request to the General Court to consider enacting a new state law that would apply statewide, but it would only be a request, it would not have any legal effect, but it would allow you to express your feelings on the subject.
Maybe, my question is for Mr. Bartner, maybe if our Town Council is willing to help him word the amendment, if he'd be willing to offer it to us so that it's actually effective and it just doesn't get, you know, thrown in the circular file when it hits the Attorney General's office.
I guess we're still live. I thank Mr. Durensis for the clarification, and I immensely thank Mr. McDonald for his help in promoting this article. I still would like this article to go through before the members here, the residents, I'd like us to vote on it, and I'd like either the town, support of Selectmen, Town Manager, et cetera, approach Mr. Durensis, myself, and possibly form a committee, and see if we can bring forth the, if we approve, and I'm sure we will approve this, to see if we can further it through the state channels. If that would be okay, so be it.
Would you be willing to allow the Town Council to help you reword this?
Yes, I am.
So that you can offer an amendment, and would the Town Council agree to help him reword it so that we can accomplish something for Mr. Bartner and for our seniors?
Mr. Durensis? Mr. Bartner, let us give this a try for you, we're not, trying to get this before us properly and do what you want to do, and if it's voted, have some impact, so if you were agreeable, the article would read as it is now, to see if the town will pass an article to request rather than give tax relief to senior citizens, and it will continue as follows, and at the end, and further that this article, if approved, be sent to the Wilmington Legislative Delegation for their consideration.
That?
That, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is there a, I'll take that as a revised main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That's what's on the floor. Okay, so further discussion? Anyone who hasn't spoken, Mr. Sagal?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to stand and voice my support for the, certainly the concept of this article, and now for the function of the revised article.
Thank you. Mrs. Deck?
Frances Deck, Salem Street, Wilmington. I was gonna suggest the same, that he go through his state, you know, because I did make a couple of telephone calls on this here, but at this here point in time, I think all we can do to help him and others is, as Ian Leinahan would say, give him a vote of confidence.
Further discussion? Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank West, Two Bridgewood Road. A little bit younger than Mr. Bartner. My kids were on the soccer field and the baseball field this morning, paid by the town of Wilmington Field. I also have two kids that are educated through Wilmington's public school system and taking tax revenue to do that. As we get older, you're not using those services as much, so I think that there's a way, that there should be a way that they can get some relief. And I think one of the ways also that can be looked at is maybe through the Board of Selectmen, is that the Board of Selectmen could write a letter to Representative Mazzoli and Senator Tarn, Representative Murphy, and ask them if they could increase the abatement on properties from, I believe it's five hundred dollars, to possibly upwards of a thousand dollars in total. So I take that as a challenge to the Board of Selectmen here today and to the Town Manager. Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I certainly don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but I think that my question is to Town Council, and I guess what happens if this passes, or can this possibly pass? Because if this is just an exercise and we want to go through it, that's fine, but I think if there is an opportunity here that this could become law, and that's my question to you, can it become law, then I think we need to look at what the ramifications of this is. Because it means, it doesn't mean a lessening of budget necessarily, or a lessening of cost, the costs are still there, it just means that somebody else will be paying for it. And, you know, I'm getting to that age too, and so it's probably a good thing for me down the road, but the point is, the total pie remains the same, it's just who has to pay for a larger balance of that pie. And so that's why I think the voters here need to understand that that's part of the equation. You know, I don't know if there are, I know there are some seniors that are on fixed income, and it's difficult for them, but I also know that there are a lot of young people who are putting kids through school and who also have some, you know, difficult financial situations as well. So I think that this is a noble thing, I think the legislature has already addressed this in a number of cases. I think both Ms. Marsiello from the elderly services department and Mr. Moynihan have conducted all kinds of programs on this and probably could provide additional information as to how seniors can affect benefits on their property tax rates and other taxes that they have to pay. But the question, Mr. Moderator threw you to Mr. Durensis, is if this passes, what is the effect of the law? And to the general public, the costs remain the same, it's just that other folks will be sharing at a greater disproportionate amount the burden of the taxes.
Mr. Durensis?
This motion is not binding, and therefore it is not a law. It is not binding because it's a request to the general court to consider these issues. Any action that the general court has to take on this, if they do anything on this, has got to be equal across state, across the state. People need to be treated equally when it comes to matters of taxation. So it is as currently pending a non-binding request for consideration by the legislative delegation.
Mrs. Shukas?
I've paid taxes for 48 years. I'm on a retiree. I have a fixed income. I don't want to move out of Wilmington. Never complained about my taxes. I look around at the other towns. We've gotten good value for our taxes. We don't charge for the school buses for the kids. We don't charge them for their sports activities and I hope we will never come to that. However, don't chase your senior citizens out of town. Let them stay. They'll keep paying taxes at a reduced rate. Now I want to know, is the board going to support us in this? Who goes to the general court for us? Does our town council go to the general court? Someone has to go to represent us, who knows what they're talking about, who knows the legalese on this. Who's going to represent us from the town? We voted in. What are you going to do for us? We've been doing for you for years and I would like to know if town council, is he going to go to the general court for us and petition this? Someone has to do it.
The motion as it's presented, Mrs. Shukas, would ask that this motion be given to the Wilmington Legislative Delegation for their consideration. That's, that's all this motion is.
All right. Will that be an open meeting? When you have a meeting on this, will, because we voted it in, will it be an open meeting so we can again voice our opinion to this committee? They're going to go and represent us?
Representative Mazzelli, maybe you could help me with the process once it gets to you.
The way it has to work is this. You have to come in with something definitive here, so you do have a say in it. You have to petition us with a plan that you subscribe to, the town does. And it would be a vote of the body here, directed to us, to address that in that fashion. Can we legally put through something like that? Perhaps. But as the council was saying earlier, usually what they subscribe to has to be something uniform across the board. The only thing that we have pending right now, let me tell you, it isn't worth a dime. It's better than nothing, but it's weighted. You know, if you make a certain income, you're not eligible and it's almost like you have to file every year for it. So what's on the docket that's gone through the House and ready to go to the Senate is fraught with a lot of problems. So the bottom line is, I'm the general court. You elect me. I'm a member of the general court. Petition comes through the town meeting telling us what you want to do and we try to file the bill and see if we can get it through. And as council said earlier, when you try to do something that's not in alignment with other communities, that's when you have a problem. This last one we put through, as I said, the only, the only thing I could say about it honestly, is better than nothing. And that doesn't say an awful lot. So if you want to, it's an uphill battle. If you want to come up with your own plan at town meeting, and maybe you've got one going now, I don't know. I think you're petitioning the general court, aren't you with this right now or not?
The motion is to, I move that the town vote to request tax relief for seniors 65 and older to receive a 5% reduction on tax bills. Also to be included is a 5% increase every five-year period, i.e. 65 gets 5%, 70, 10%, 75, 15%. Requirements, five years Wilmington residency and homeownership. And further that this article, if approved, be sent to the Wilmington Legislative Delegation for their consideration.
So it really is nothing definitive to be sent to us for our consideration. I think council will agree. You really have to put something in there that's solid and says that we'd like town hereby request that you do this, this, and this. And then you ask us to file it, not to consider it, but to file it and see if we can get it through as a piece of legislation. But we will subscribe to the town's wishes and I'll speak for my other two colleagues, Representative Murphy from Burlington and Senator Tarr. If you send this to us, we'll consider it, but it has no, it's not substantial. It doesn't really do anything. But if you're looking for something definitive, I'm just trying to put everything right on the line, you really have to petition the general court with a legal petition telling us what you want to do. As far as this is concerned, I don't think it has any standing and I think council has to agree with that. It really has no standing even in the general court.
So what is the first step? What is the first step that we have to do?
First step is a local home rule petition, which is uphill, but I'll be delighted to work on it. A local home rule petition. We have one going through right now for the entire state and it was, and I'll tell you where it came from. The town of, the city of Newton is building like a $300 million school and they're afraid they're not going to get the override. So what they've done is exempt the seniors. That's the one thing we've got, that's what it is, to exempt the seniors from that portion of their taxes that can be ascribed to the school. So that's all they're saving. So when I say it isn't great, but I voted for it because it was better than nothing. Well, what you have to do to answer your question is come in with a petition, send it to us as requiring a, requesting a piece of legislation. But the only thing I agree with council on, I won't say the only thing, what I agree with them on is when you try to do something that unique, it's uphill, but we've gotten involved in uphill battles before. In fact, yesterday, we were told earlier this year, 450,000 for Butter's Farm last year. We were told impossible to get any more. I just got 200,000 more yesterday. It's going to go through the senate and the governor's office. So, you know, sometimes we do what looks like the impossible, but I'd be delighted if you put something through like that. But I'm, I'm listening to the document as the moderator read it and he read it verbatim. It doesn't really, it isn't tangible, especially when you say for the consideration of the legislature. I don't know what would happen if you put it through yourself and try to do it yourself. That's up to town council. But for the general court, if you petition the general court, we'll try to file a bill for you.
Could it be, could it be set up through the town as a rebate process?
Let me, let me try to step in and tell you, kind of go through what we, we need to do today. A home rule petition is beyond the scope of what Mr. Bodnar asked for in his original article, so we're not going to do a home rule petition today. If you like this idea of what, what Mr. Bodnar is requesting, my suggestion is, is that you move forward with the article we have, then sit with Representative Mazzelli and figure out how you take the next step. The step Representative Mazzelli is talking about cannot be done today. Okay, just to be clear. That's well beyond what Mr. Bodnar asked for in his original article. Okay? Okay? Further discussion, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I first want to say thanks a lot to Mikey Bodnar. I think it's a great thing that he's trying to do here. I'm going to vote for this article. I wasn't really sure coming into the meeting, but I'm going to vote for it and I think we should show a sign of solidarity for our seniors. They're one of the most vulnerable sections of our population and they're getting killed. They need our help and I think we're obligated to try to figure out a way to help them. I think we should pass this article and then Mikey, I think you should come back and do a home rule petition and I'll support you there too. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've listened to council and to the town manager. Town manager's done a tremendous job. I know we tell him that a lot, but he's done a good job and he's very conservative in our monies. However, in our budget, if you looked at the school budget, for example, it went up $2 million every year and we have made accommodations to support the school with $2 million every year. And this particular article, we want to show some support to it. I'm a senior now, so I can say that. And the, the tax rate comparatively in Wilmington is not that high when you, when you look at the services we get. I mean, when I look at my property in Florida for what I pay and don't get the service, I think Wilmington ranks very high in terms of that. So I would support this article in terms of what next we have to do, whatever it is, and I'd like to help if I can help in fostering that petition. And as Mr. Mazzelli said, the rebate that we get from the state, I don't ever get it. I don't qualify. And there, there are some people who get a lot of money that they can live on as seniors. For example, myself being a retired municipal worker, my pay is almost the same, so I can sort of make it at least for the, for a few of the next five years. Other people who don't have retirement benefits, who works in private sectors, et cetera, their income is going down compared to what they have to pay for taxes. And, and so I'd like to, us to really as a town, consider the remedies for our seniors.
Thank you. Further discussion, someone who hasn't spoken, Mr. McDonald, you already spoken, Mr. Cronin and Mr. Bodnar, could I see you for one second to make sure I have this article correct?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Bob Cronin, 75 Park Street. I'm not sure if, if the whole discussion has gotten a little overly complicated. My mother is a resident of the town of Wakefield. I do her tax work and she gets an annual $250 reduction in her taxes by virtue of her status as a senior citizen. So something's already happened in the town of Wakefield. It's been in place for years. I'd be happy to work with Mr. Bodnar or give the information to anyone else on the, on the town board, but something is in place in the town of Wakefield that, that sounds to me as if it accomplishes the same thing that Mr. Bodnar is trying to accomplish.
Great. Thanks for the recommendation and for your assistance. Mrs. Leinahan?
The gentleman that spoke before, I had spoke to him earlier, and that $265 the town of Wakefield somehow got for their seniors, I would not qualify probably for, if we set this on a income basis, but I'd like to hear from Terry Marsiella because I happen to know that she does deal. She is the director and there are a lot of people that that would truly help, people that are older than myself, though I'll be 77 in May. And they, they need help. They do need help and they need some kind of a break. I, I would like to request if we could hear from Terry Marsiella, are there people, seniors here in town that could benefit by this? And if so, I would recommend that we go ahead and vote on this and then let it go to the general court and let Mr. Durensis be our representative there with the general court. If Wakefield has it, I think that we have a good chance. And I did want to add a lanyard here that we do pay for school lunches at half a year's.
Thank you, Ms. Leinahan. Mr. Banda?
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Okay, the question has been moved. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. This is not debatable, I'm sorry. He's made the motion and it will be up to the body to determine whether we end debate here. So the motion is to move the previous question, which will end debate and give the maker of the motion up to 10 minutes to speak if they should so choose. Okay? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay, this requires two-thirds. We'll, we'll try it here with the voice vote. All those in favor of ending debate signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Okay. We are at article number 24 as revised by Mr. Bodnar. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? This is a non-binding vote. Everyone is clear? We're sending a, a, this article to legislative delegation for their consideration. Okay, we're clear? All those in favor of article 24 as presented signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on article number 27, which is on 30, page 31 as well. To see if the town of Wilmington will vote to authorize transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of a certain parcel of land owned by the town of Wilmington herein after described to the selectmen of the town of Wilmington. Said land having been determined to be no longer needed for any municipal purpose and for the express purpose of conveying the same, all in accordance with Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 30B. And further that the selectmen be and hereby authorized to grant and convey such interest in the land as is owned by the town of Wilmington and upon such terms and conditions as shall be determined by the selectmen in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 16 of the Bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington Revised. Said parcel of interest is described as map 6, parcel 19A or take any other action related thereto is their motion. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
No, can you turn his microphone up, please? Go ahead.
Hello, hello? Yes, Mr. Moderator. I, I move to see if the town of Wilmington will vote to authorize transfer.
And Mr. Nelson, does it read as is in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. His approval, planning board offered no recommendation. Town manager declaration of surplus.
Based upon the review of the property review board and our own review, we've determined that this land is not surplus to the needs of the town at this time.
Mr. Nelson, you were notified of that declaration of non-surplus?
Yes, and I'd like to ask if they would make a reconsideration after I presented some facts.
Actually, I'm not if, unless the town manager determines that the parcel is surplus. By state law, the body is not allowed to, to even vote on that, Mr. Nelson. It's, so I, I'm sorry, I, we can't move forward with the article unless we have declaration of surplus, fair market value determination, and then a vote from the body. I can't even get to that point procedurally.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
I'm sorry. So I, I would need a motion to pass over though, just to, so we, we take care of the article. Is there a motion to pass over? There is. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Representative Mazzelli informed me that there was a questionnaire that he had handed out in the foyer when you came in and had asked that you, if you could please complete that and return it to the foyer area on your way out. Thank you. Article number 22. Okay, article 22, which is on page 27. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 3 of the zoning bylaw by adding the following new section 3.9, inclusionary housing as follows. And that continues on page 27, 28, 29, and a portion of 30. And I'm not going to read all of that to you if that's okay with everyone. Seeing no objection or take any other action related thereto is their motion, Mr. Sorrentino. This is obviously involving inclusionary housing. Mr. Sorrentino?
To pass over this article?
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor of passing over article 22 signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Now I'm really glad I didn't read that. We're on article number 20, which is on page 20. To see if the town will vote to petition the general court and to request its representatives in the general court to seek enactment of special legislation for the town in the form set forth below. It being the intent of the town to authorize the general court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purposes hereof, or to take any other action related thereto, an act amending the Wilmington Sewer Act. And again, unless I hear objection from the body, I am not planning on reading this. This continues on page 21. This continues on page 21 and on page 24. Is there any objection to me not reading this to you? I'm sure Mr. Kira will go over what this is about in his presentation. Good. Is there a motion? Mr. Kira.
I move that a petition for a home rule special act be presented to the general court in the form set forth in the warrant, it being the intent of the town to authorize the general court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purposes hereof.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. His approval. Discussion. Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I would like to suggest that two individuals address this issue one in terms of some of what it intends to accomplish substantively. Michael Woods, the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and also the legal implications to be discussed by Town Council Paul Durensis, with your permission.
Absolutely. By the rules, we have 10 minutes total, so Mr. Woods.
Good afternoon. What this article is doing is what we have been working on for the last five years in the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan, and that is to take a comprehensive look at the town's water system, the sewer system, as well as the groundwater and stormwater that enters and leaves the town. Part of that study asked that we limit the amount of searing that would be available in town. So we went through and looked at every parcel in town and determined which ones could be sewed and which ones could work well under Title V. With that, a map was developed that is in the CWRMP document, and what we're asking is that this body give us permission to go to the general court and allow us to set up a sewer district. And in addition to that, we're also asking that two funds be established. One to pay for when developers come in, they will pay to have us review and all the engineering work that needs to be done to see if something truly needs to be sewed, and also another fund, which would be a mitigation fund, that would pay for any type of environmental improvements that could offset the transport of water out of town by way of the sewer system.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Durensis.
I think the act was fairly summarized by Michael Woods. In general, the town has, back in the 1950s, a special act that authorized the town to construct and operate a system of sewers. This home rule petition before you is a request to update that 1958 statute. It's a 50-year-old statute. It brings it to 2008 and incorporates the recommendations of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. The key features as outlined before are the creation of sewer districts. The purpose of the sewer districts is to say that within those sewer districts, there are sewers, and outside the sewer districts, there is supposed to be groundwater recharge. The fundamental theory is that if you take all of the wastewater in the town and transport it to Boston Harbor, you're drying up the aquifer in this town, so you have to replenish the aquifer. There is guidance from DEP asking the town to do more local recharge, and this home rule petition implements that requirement.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Yes. With regard to Section 2, where it's deleting the words "not exceeding in the aggregate $500,000" and the words Wilmington Sewerage Loan Act of 1958, can you tell us what the purpose of that aggregate amount was for and why it needs to be deleted? And the other question is, is there motivation with this article to help out the Simons property, or are there people who are going to benefit from sewerage when other people are going to be hurt in not being able to get it?
Mr. Durensis, Section 2, on page 21.
The act that was passed in 1958 authorized borrowing of only $500,000. Back in 1958, that was a lot of money. You could buy a house for $20,000. That has remained on the books all this time. The point of removing that is so that there would not be this kind of limitation to the extent that borrowing was needed. Borrowing has to be authorized by town meeting. It still would come back to this body to determine if any amount is to be borrowed, and if so, how much. It just gets rid of a 50-year-old limitation.
Mr. Woods, is this article before us to help or support a specific development site? I think it was a question, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Woods?
The Simons properties, and also if people that are trying to get sewer, as the master plan was, master sewer plan showed going through their properties, if now they're not going to be able to, and maybe someone such as Simon Properties is going to be able to get the additional flow, or if Simon's properties have to go to a septic system and put more water into that area between the contaminated area and a well field.
Mr. Woods?
This article will not help the Simons property directly. To the other question, the sewer master plan that was developed back in 1987, I believe, by Facebook and Thondike, sewed everyone in this town. The plan that was outlined in the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan has limited that to maybe another 10% of the town being sewed over what already exists.
And the other question is, I see kind of a contradiction, because initially, Mr. Woods said that the developers were going to have to pay for the sewer, but if we're deleting the words $500,000 and it's relative to borrowing, is this pretty much opening up the sky is the limit to borrowing, or what does this do, Mr. Durensis?
Mr. Durensis.
Any borrowing that's going to be done is going to be done with the approval of town meeting. Normally, for water and sewer borrowings, these are to be paid for by the users and those benefited by sewers or water connections. So the normal language would have those bonds repaid by those who pay the fees. But it's not required, and if you all decide that you want to have some public taxpayer support of a particular project, in addition to the ratepayers, if you think there's an overall community benefit, you all can make that decision. You're not prohibited from making that decision.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Ms. Stevenson.
Stevenson, 7 Chandler Road. I'd like to speak on this article on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Wilmington. The League has held a position favoring the development of a comprehensive water management plan for the town of Wilmington since 1980. So we commend the town, the Water and Sewer Commission, and several of us participated on the committee for full disclosure. In general, we support this article, but we did have a couple of questions. In terms of the two funds that are being set up, we wanted to know, are they enterprise fund accounts? And obviously, we think Mr. Morris and Mr. Woods and the Water and Sewer Commission will manage those accounts, but we'd like an explanation of how they're to be set up, and how much transparency will we, the public, have as to what's in each of those funds and how the money is spent each year? And I don't know if you want to have that question answered first before I go on to my other one?
Sure. Mr. Morris, maybe?
This is a little complex. The Water Department is set up as a special revenue account. It is not technically an enterprise fund. It is rather close to it. By that virtue, all the revenue that comes into the Water Fund is accounted for within that fund. And you could look in your town report, and there's actually a little summary in there, a one-page summary of the activity in the Water Fund. Therefore, any revenues would go to the Water Fund that are generated for water-related purposes. That is simple enough. The Sewer Fund is a little bit different. It is part of the general fund. But by virtue of this article, I would think that this would have to become a segregated fund, just the portion that is referred to in this article.
It's not an enterprise.
The Sewer Department is not an enterprise fund either, because it is in the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
I think Mr. Durensis wants to add to that, Mrs. Stevenson. Mr. Durensis?
The language of the two funds are copied from the language for revolver accounts, not enterprise funds, and it establishes essentially two revolvers. Revolving accounts are those that are enabled to expend funds that come in for a particular purpose, and these sections indicate what funds come in and what it can be spent on. So it's, revolvers are authorized by the general laws. This just makes it specific for this particular use.
Ms. Stevenson.
Mr. Durensis, I guess what we're driving at is how will we know as the residents, taxpayers, and ratepayers in the town, how much money comes in each year and how much goes out, and what each project is for? I guess as a member of the committee that helped shape this policy and program, I'd like to know that the money is being spent on a particular stormwater recharge improvement project, for example. I just want to know where the money's going and how much detail will there be in Mr. Morris's annual report?
Mr. Durensis?
The Water and Sewer Commission has got to make reports under state law. There are a whole variety of reports that have to be filed and maintained, and I would defer to the town accountant for that.
The annual town report is a summary of the town's financial statements. It is not meant to record every transaction the town shows, nor every account. They are often consolidated, and you'll see in special revenue accounts where there's a lot of grants, for example, they're all consolidated into a few lines with some type of summary. My office provides any number, say 100 grants, for example. This would be treated no different. It would be a revolving fund under jurisdiction of the Water and Sewer Commissioners. We would record the money coming in, the money being expended, and for whatever purpose, but specifically would not necessarily show in the town's financial statements, because they all get consolidated into various things. That information would be available to anybody who asked for it. It's very easily for me to account for it and to provide that information to anyone who asks for it.
Ms. Stevenson.
I guess I'll see you in your office, then. My, our other question has to do with, at the bottom of page 21, the new Section 8b. Our interpretation of this paragraph is basically if you want your parcel in a sewer district, but DEP and the Water and Sewer Commission don't deem it worthy to be in the sewer district, you can come to town meeting and get a two-thirds vote and get it in. Is there some reason this is, this is part of the article? Is there a legal reason this needs to be in here? Because it seems to basically override what we assume are the knowledgeable people at DEP and on our Water and Sewer Commission as to what's appropriate for the sewer districts that were identified through this planning process. So we're just curious why there's this out, I guess, or in, incorporated into the bylaw.
Mr. Durensis.
The way, the logic of this home rule petition has districts that are created by town meeting. And if we did not have this section, then anybody could come to town meeting and say, create a new section over here that would have a new sewer district. It's simply a bylaw voted by town meeting, majority vote. The idea behind these sections, the sections specifically being questioned, is to provide some professionalism to the expansion of the sewer district. That is, you do have input from the Sewer Commission, the Water and Sewer Commission, and that's entitled to some deference. How much deference is an important issue. If this section was not here, there would be no deference at all, and any majority vote could put it anywhere.
So in other words, because this is requiring the two-thirds vote, you're saying that gives greater deference and more thoughtful professional input, rather than just having nothing, where it could be a majority vote?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I just want to say, I do support this article. I mean, there's been a lot of people that worked hard on the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan and have worked long and hard to try to get a sewer district in the town and to protect our water resources. I was one of those people also that served on that committee, and the League of Women Voters absolutely deserves a lot of accolades for their work on this article and the institution of a watershed, not on the article, but on the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan and getting that to happen. The only comment that I have today on this is I just couldn't find a map inside the warrant that depicted where the sewer districts were. Now, I pretty much know where they were, because I served on the committee, but the people that I was just sitting with, well, am I in the sewer district? Am I not in the sewer district? And I think it would have been a good idea to have a map depicting, even if it had to be several maps, depicting exactly where the sewer district was.
Thank you. Mr. Durensis?
Until this act is voted by the general court, and until you all voted tonight, there aren't sewer districts for there to be a map of.
Mrs. Lennyhan.
Yes. Excuse me. I'd like to direct this to Mr. Wood. Section 3, Paragraph 2b, projects that will be improved the quality and quantity of surface waters in Wilmington by treating and recharging stormwater. Mr. Wood, if you could, what would be the process of recharging stormwater and also the inflow and infiltration?
I'm probably not the best person to ask on this. This is handled by the Department of Public Works, but my knowledge of it is that the water is clean through the best management practices available. It is recharged typically through infiltrators or retention basins.
And I did want to also take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters. They've been working very diligently on these issues for years, and I can remember some of the meetings, they couldn't get more than 20 or 25 people to come from the town. And I do thank you very much, Martha, for all you've done for the town and the League. Thank you.
Mr. Banda.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Banda is requesting to end debate and give the maker of the motion up to 10 minutes if they should so choose. It's not debatable. We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of ending debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number 20, as presented. All those in favor of Article 20 as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number 15, on page 14. To see if the town will vote to accept as town ways the following described streets as recommended by the Planning Board and laid out by the Board of Selectmen, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41 and Chapter 82 as amended, and shown on certain plans described below, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by below, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, such land, slope, and drainage, or other easements as may be necessary to affect the purpose of this article, and further to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to be spent by the town manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen for such purposes, or take any other action related thereto. Chisholm Way, Sequoia Drive. Is there a motion? Mr. Newhouse?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following described streets as recommended by the Planning Board and laid out by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41 and Chapter 82, as amended, and shown on certain plans described below, be hereby accepted as town public ways, and that the Board of Selectmen be hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise such land, slope, and drainage, or other easements as may become necessary to affect the purpose of this article. Chisholm Way is shown on a plan, Mink Run Extension, Wilmington, Massachusetts, definitive subdivision plan.
And Mr. Newhouse, does it read as in the booklet the rest of the way?
It does.
Great, thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Is approval. Planning Board recommendation. Is approval. Discussion. Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds, but we'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article 15 as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number 17. To see if the town will vote to petition the general court and to request its representatives in the general court to seek enactment of special legislation for the town in the form set forth below. It being the intent of the town to authorize the general court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purposes hereof, or to take any other action related thereto. An act to provide for an elected planning board in the town of Wilmington. Section 1, the list of elected positions within the town, is set forth in Section 2 of Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950. An act establishing a town manager for a government for the town of Wilmington, hereinafter referred to as the Town Manager Act, is hereby amended by adding the words "the planning board" after the words "the selectmen." Section 2, the Town Manager Act, is hereby amended by adding the following new section. Section 3A, election of planning board. At the first town election following the acceptance of this act, there shall be elected two members of the planning board for three years. Two members for two years, and one member for one year. Upon the qualification of the members so elected, the term of office of the planning board then existing shall terminate. At each annual town election thereafter, the voters shall elect members for the three-year terms to replace those whose terms are about to expire. Section 3, the list of positions appointed by the town manager is set forth in Section 12A of the Town Manager Act, is hereby amended by striking out the words "planning board." Section 4, vacancies arising among the members of the planning board shall be filled in accordance with Section 11 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Is there a motion, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town petition the general court to request its representatives to seek an enactment of special legislation for the town, it being the intent of the town to authorize the general court to make constructive changes to the next hereof, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purpose as set forth below. An act to provide for an elected planning board in the town of Wilmington.
And, Mr. McCoy, does your motion read as is contained in the booklet the rest of the way?
Yes, it does, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Is disapproval. Discussion. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I mean, to be totally honest, if it was up to me, I wouldn't even have brought it here to this body. And I just want to go back in time for a moment. All I was ever interested several months to do was put a non-binding question on the upcoming town election. And believe me, I don't need, I wouldn't need an issue to get reelected. You know, but however, you know, the majority of the board chose not to do that. Instead, they chose to bring it forth to here at a town meeting. And I can honestly say that Chairman Newhouse has done a good job. He's been very fair with myself and the memberships of the board, and I want to thank them for going forward with it. And I'll say it again, I had no intentions of bringing it here. I wanted it as a non-binding question on the ballot. And what that would have done was this, basically an opinion poll. That's all it would have done. It wouldn't have enacted any legislation, you know, the sky wouldn't have fallen down. Everything would have been the same it was. It just gives us an opinion. Not too long ago, the planning board, slash more so master plan, they sent, you know, flyers in the mills many years ago to see how you wanted the town to develop. No different. And let me just start off saying, by, it was nine years and a week ago today, I stood in this very spot. There was a similar article to ask you, the people, to have the members of the planning board to be elected. I took a position back nine years, one week ago, in support of the present system of being appointed by the town manager. You know, a lot has happened over the past decade. I changed my mind. However, without getting into that, and without getting into personalities, that's not what I'm going to do. The members of the planning board, they're good folks. They've lived in town all their lives, most of them. They're raising their families. And, you know, they've made favorable votes, they've made unfavorable votes. And I understand, I used to serve on that planning board, and it takes a lot out of you. You leave your families, you go to a special meeting. And you guys were all, you know, myself, I remember, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, and it was continuous. And I know when the town manager appointed Carroll not too long ago as the head of the department, I was, I believe, the first one to give kind words relative to the appointment. And the only difference that I see, and I'm not going to get into personalities, and I didn't go solicit people to come to the meeting. I didn't take out ads or flyers and try to drum, support, beat the drum to get BP. I didn't do that. The only difference of opinion is this. As an elected official, if I make an unfavorable vote, you had that opportunity, you voted me out of office. That doesn't happen with the president board or the planning board. That's the only point that I'm making. And I'm not going to, you know, stay up here and give a big speech. I don't plan on doing that. And I'll leave it up to you good folks to make that decision. And I'll say it again, if it was up to me, wouldn't be here. All I was trying to do was accomplish a non-binding question that would have had, just for opinions about how people feel in the community. That's basically it. Thank you.